Don't be, don't be crosstalkin' across me.
I do know I am.
Because I'm gonna be, uh!
The ladies down here are well behaved.
It's go time. Good evening, everyone. The December 2nd, 2024 Legislative Session of the Anarundel County Council is called to order. Please ensure all phones and electronic devices are set to silence. We will now have the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance led by Ms. Radveen.
Good evening. As we begin this evening's meeting, let us take a moment to pray in the manner which we choose, or simply focus our intentions for the purpose at hand. Let us be guided by wisdom and fairness to address the challenges brought before us. Let us find compassion to help the marginalized. Let us not only speak of justice, but act in just ways. Let us remember that what may appear to divide us will never be greater than those things that unite us. Let us seek to govern in the image of love, as love holds the wisest answers. And before we move on to the pledge, I would like to take a moment of silence to acknowledge the passing of two legendary Anapolitans who, I think, have made an impact across the county. Journalist Pat Ferguson, who worked for a long time with the Capital Gazette, and Vincent Leggett, who was known as the Admiral of the Chesapeake. And both of those gentlemen are big losses for our community, so if we could take a moment of silence. Thank you, and I hope we'll keep their families in our thoughts and prayers. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will now conduct our annual election of Chair and Vice Chair. May I please have a motion to suspend Rule 4-104 to introduce and vote on Resolution Number 50-24 out of order?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on the motion to suspend Rule 4-104 to introduce and vote on Resolution Number 50-24 out of order. Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Absent.
Ms. Radveen.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one absent, the motion to suspend the rules to introduce and vote on Bill 50, or, excuse me, Resolution 50-24 has passed. Madam Secretary, please read Resolution 50-24. Resolution Number 5024. Resolution: Electing a Chair and Vice Chair of the County Council, whereas Section 302A of the Anarundel County Charter provides that the Council, the County Council at its regular meeting or session in December of each year shall elect a Chair and Vice Chair from its membership. Now therefore, be it resolved by the County Council of Anarundel County, Maryland, that it hereby elects Julia K. Hummer to be Chair of the County Council, and be it further resolved that it hereby elects Lisa D.B. Radveen to be Vice Chair of the County Council. Would any Councilmember like to make a statement at this time? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution Number 50-24. Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Absent.
Ms. Radveen.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one absent, Resolution 50-24 has been adopted. Well, let me be the first to congratulate Chair Hummer and Vice Chair Radveen. I look very much forward to passing the gavel this evening. It's been a pleasure to serve as your Chair for the last year. Come down here with me, please. All right. So I ask everyone to please be patient with me tonight as I learn to go through the motions, but I have Mr. Volkey beside me, who will very quickly correct me if I get anything wrong on Robert's rules, so I feel more confident already to have there. So keep me on my toes.
Great to be here with you.
So before we move on, Madam Secretary, could you please read the ethics statement? The Ethics Commission has asked that I advise you that, under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the County Council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The Chair of the Ethics Commission has asked that those who wish to testify in any form review the general information on lobbying sheet located on the Ethics website under forms and publications. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, please contact the Ethics Commission at 410-222-4412. All right. Before we open our discussions and public hearings, I would like to remind everyone in attendance, whether testifying or as a member of the audience, we must maintain decorum at all times within these chambers. Please understand that individual conversations in the audience are very disruptive to the proceedings, and I would kindly ask you to step out of the chambers if a side discussion is necessary. We will now open our invitation to the audience. This is an opportunity to speak briefly on any subject not included in the printed agenda. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool? Yes, Madam Chair. We received one piece, which has been shared with the Council, added to the record, and posted to the website. There were two other submissions, but they were clearly for Bill Number 9224, so they have been added to the appropriate spot. We will now call on individuals who signed up ahead of the meeting. When I call your name, please come to the table and have a seat. When it's your turn, state your name and address for the record. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. And I'm new at this, so I'm gonna wrap this if you go over your two minutes. Just kidding. Please listen for the buzzer and respect the two-minute time limit, as others are signed up to speak. If you have more than two minutes to share, I'm gonna ask you to submit your additional thoughts using our online testimony tool. We have three people signed up tonight. Kyle Nimhard, Jim Bonjourno, Charlotte Feringo Whitaker. And if there's anyone else here who wishes to speak, please come up to the table as well at this time.
Hi, good evening. My name is Kyle Nimhard. I live at 7809 Maple Run Court, Glen Burnie, Maryland, 21060. I want to thank you all for having me tonight, in particular, Councilman Volkey. I'm here to express concerns about the Blue Stone Builders' proposed development of the Nixon property located at Hartwell Road in Glen Burnie, 21060, District 3. I'm a proud resident of Cedar Point neighborhood, which is located immediately adjacent to the property. The residents of Cedar Point could be considered the new kids on the block. We've been there since 2017, and I have no doubt that myself and my neighbors would extend the same hospitality and graciousness to new residents of the area that was extended to us. However, we do have serious concerns about the proposed 171 townhome development that's proposed on the Nixon property that was presented to us on Monday, November 25, 2024, by the We also have concerns about the way the public meeting was conducted, as required by Anarundel County. The public meeting was poorly facilitated. There were no speakers or microphones so that attendees could hear questions that other concerned participants posed to the developer, and it was hard to hear over side conversations, or speak over side conversations. I believe proper visual and audio aids would have been sufficient, but they were not provided, and therefore, if you look at the video on the county website, you'll probably notice that it's very hard to pick up on a lot of discussion. So therefore, my belief that the community meeting held on November 25 should be considered void, as they did not meet the minimum requirements. What further concerns me is that the developer claimed that the county was in support of this development, but there was no representative from the county there to deny or confirm whether this was true or not. And so if the representative, if what the representative of Blue Stone Developers said was true, I'd like to know on what basis planning and zoning did support this plan. So in closing, it appears to, well, I don't want to use my time, but I think you get the gist.
Thank you. Mr. Bonjourno.
Good evening. My name is Jim Bonjourno. I live in Odenton across from Gork Park. I hope you all had a nice Thanksgiving. I'm here again tonight to discuss fieldlight management at Gork Park. You have my online testimony proposing new legislation on that topic. Since the last council meeting, two council members have corresponded with me. I appreciate that. Both councillors were sympathetic to my concern about wasting taxpayer dollars to light empty fields at Gork Park. However, both councillors explained that the council's hands were tied because the council is part of the legislative branch of government, not the executive branch. With respect, I disagree. I believe the council has more power than it thinks. Under the county charter, Section 306, Legislative Powers of the County Council, it states that the County Council may also provide for the enforcement of all ordinances and resolutions adopted by fines, penalties, and imprisonment within the limits prescribed by law. So in other words, if the County Council were to adopt the legislation I proposed regarding the management of fieldlights, they could enforce that. In addition, the council also has the ability to instruct or direct the county auditor to perform financial audits. Section 310 says the County Council shall, by resolution, appoint the county auditor. Section 311, Duties of County Auditor. Section B states that the County Council can ask the auditor to conduct a separate investigation of an act or allegation of fraud, waste, or abuse, and the obligation expenditure, receipt, or use of county resources. It further states that any special examination or audit shall be available for public inspection. So I've made an allegation that there's been waste in terms of the use of the fieldlights at Gork Park. I believe thousands of dollars have been wasted shining lights on empty fields. And so I would ask that the County Council ask the county auditor to conduct an appropriate audit of that use. Thank you.
Ms. Feringo Whitaker does not appear to be here.
Yes.
Oh, you are?
Yes.
Oh, please, come on up. Mr. Nimhard, could you turn the microphone so that it would be, so Ms. Whitaker can be there on the end of the microphone, could reach her? Thank you.
Okay. I came to this meeting to speak on the policy changes that would be made with the DDA, the Developmental Disabilities Administration. Okay. So my name is Charlotte Feringo Whitaker, and I'm very honored to be speaking before you today. One thing you may notice about me is I am quite disabled. In fact, I am what Western medicine calls pretty darn disabled. I have not walked since I was eight years old, which means I have a good bit of experience sitting in this chair. Over the years, I've met many able-bodied individuals who have declared that they could never imagine living like me, that it looks like such a struggle that they never want it for themselves or their loved ones. I should point out that these people thought that they were paying me a compliment. After over 25 years like this, one thing I do know to be true is that being disabled is actually a great time. I mean, the parking alone. And when you decide to be as disabled as I am, you can end up with people who do virtually everything for you. If I'm in bed and I want ice cream, I don't have to think, do I feel like walking to the kitchen for this? Because I need people for that. Usually, the only ones who get that kind of life are extremely wealthy or royalty, but I can get that same treatment without having to make tons of money or be inbred. So whether or not I have sold anyone quite yet on this groovy lifestyle, it is important to note that when one does join our community, there are two things to keep in mind. First, we will be getting jackets. It was discussed at the last meeting. Second, there are a certain set of rules we have to follow to stay a part of society. Sure, we may get the best parking spots and are allowed to cut in front of lines, but, as the saying goes, with great power comes great responsibility. That little blue placard that hangs on our rearview mirror is like a symbol. Other than being the literal handicap symbol, it is also there to show for all to see that we have proudly accepted the challenge, the challenge of being disabled in today's society, not unlike Frodo and the Ring. So the rules. Rule number one, the most effective way to receive the respect and acceptance of society as a disabled person is to become well-renowned in a field such as theoretical physics or cosmology. If you can come up with some major breakthroughs in topics like general relativity or quantum mechanics, you're in, you're set. Number two, on the chance that rule number one is not quite your vibe, you could also just be exceptional at something. It could be anything, painting, singing, or even knowing a lot of trivia, just anything that makes you an inspiration to others.
Ms. Whitaker, can you wrap it up? This is, and I will say, you excel at being very funny, very entertaining, but could you wrap it up? Thank you.
I will skip to number five. When dealing with government assistance, it is important to remember who you are dealing with. Take the FMS Self-Directed Services, which helps over 3,600 physically and intellectually disabled participants and their families to receive funding for care. This program is ran by the Developmental Disabilities Administration, which is under the Maryland Department of Health, and is a waiver funded by Medicaid. So when something like the Developmental Disabilities Administration, or the DDA, starts to make policy changes that forces the disabled participants and their families to do even more paperwork and jump through more hoops for the care they absolutely need, you should never question Chase Cook, the Communications Director at NDH, when they say the extra paperwork is to, and I quote, "help reduce processing delays." And when they start to require those participants to document their daily activities, such as going to the bathroom or showering, you should never, you should accept without a doubt, when the Communication Director states that it is necessary to ensure that these taxpayer-funded services are delivered responsibly and with appropriate oversight.
Thank you, Ms. Whitaker.
Thank you.
Mr. Swenson? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Muller. Yes.
My name is Gary Muller from Jessup. I'm here tonight to talk about the lack of responsible development that I've seen in the last couple of months with bills like 7224, the MP DU bill, 7525, mixed use. And I call these bills the flexibility bills. And the thing that disturbs me the most in coming to the hearings here is I just see a lack of respect and willing to listen and understand the collective wisdom of Anarundel County citizens, who, for years, and I mean, tens of years, have said, "We need to, we need to control the rate of development, we need less density, we need to deal with infrastructure." The zoning densities that are being proposed are those of a city. And I, and I don't see any discussion about how you deal with transportation. If you have a city, and that seems to be the goal of this body, then you need to have light rail, maglev, and bus routes, and we don't see that in Anarundel County. Other counties that could be used as an example might be Montgomery County, where they have to put in our 56 housing on four and a half acres, but that development is right next to a light rail line. Anarundel County, it looks like this, these flexibility bills are just marching forward with no end in sight, no agreement as to when do you know that you've developed the county enough. And I think that's an example of lack of responsibility, a lack of getting an understanding and respecting the wisdom of the county citizens, and the fact that you don't respect the Plan and Advisory Board.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
John Pantoliti, 1609A, for Genesee Street. A week ago, you received a report from me titled "Crownsville: A New Beginning," offering a different vision for the Crownsville property than what was presented by the county administration. Oversimplified, the implementation of the county executive's vision would make Crownsville a memorial park, and the vast majority of the 500 acres would remain as a sanctuary of meadows, forests, and open space to provide areas for mental and racial healing. I have read the county's entire report, and there are some worthy functions. However, we propose that the best way to honor the history of Crownsville is to use the majority of the land to meet the pressing countywide needs of the living. Affordable housing for our veterans, seniors, workforce, and our service workers. Expansion of mental health and addiction services. A vocational center for both patients and the entire county. Creation of an allied health park, which could become a mental health, addiction, and research hub for the region, state, and country. Crownsville belongs to all the residents of Anarundel County. Yes, there has been input over the past year, but it came primarily from those neighboring communities. We need to have an outreach into the other six councilmatic districts. The future of Crownsville is far too important to be decided by just those living nearby who may be inconvenienced. We can make a significant dent in the need for affordable housing by providing the land so applicant only has to qualify for the building materials. In summary, we are asking you to slow down any approvals until the rest of the county has had an opportunity to weigh in and consider our proposal. We need to get a handle on real costs and future expenditures. The county's plan does not provide for income generation to pay for their vision, which we estimate could be close to $1 billion. Welcome any questions you may have.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is Michael Brown. I live in Tanger Springs in District 3 in Glen Burnie. First, I do, I would like to thank the county for how easy it is to submit Public Information Act requests. I have done this with other jurisdictions, and Anarundel County seems to have it very streamlined, so I thank you for that. The main reason I'm here tonight is to talk to you about the park that is in current development and construction called the Tanger Springs Park. This park is at the intersection of Heritage Crossing and Tanger Springs Lane. The construction was supposed to begin on November 18. No work has been done on that park since the 18th. There's been a lot of feedback from the community. There's been two community meetings. The last one seemed to be very fast-paced, and opinions wanted to be ignored. There's, there's a park not that far by Fire Station 11 that includes the same amenities that are being proposed at this park. So my question to the council is, why are we building a park in a residential community when there is a park down the street that I gave Madam Secretary images of what is at Sully Park and what is being proposed at Tanger Springs Park? You can see that they're saying, Sully Park is not maintained, it looks like. There's enough area in Sully Park to include everything that is at Tanger Springs Park. We feel, other community members, that this might increase crime, other illegal activity. We've already had some of that in our community, so I wanted to bring it up to you guys this evening. That new park is costing us $6.3 million. Why not upgrade the existing parks? It would be much less. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson?
Julia Johnson, P.O., Box 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. I would like to, you know, reemphasize the importance of the opposition to this rapid development that's going on. I cannot tell you how many people have come up to me and said, "This is not the Annapolis that I grew up in. It's not the Annapolis that I expected to be when I grew up. It's not the Annapolis where I fit in." I never go here, and I never go there, which were places that I, that my family and I frequented. I think that there truly is need, you know, to be, you know, pretty serious about looking at some of the destruction that's going on. A lot of you know I live in, you know, the 7th region, and I fight to protect the trees, and they're just coming down as though, well, if you get out there in the dark of night, and, you know, who's gonna go out and challenge the guy with the chainsaw? You wait till morning, and they've already hauled away the firewood. And this is extremely disturbing, because a lot of us have had enough education that we believe in and understand that the climate is changing. It is going to be a real problem. You know, we never had smoke coming down from Canada, forest fires, smoke, you know, and when that happened, I was one of the people who could not go out, you know, at all because of my vulnerability. And we know that it's a problem elsewhere. You know, you're gonna be talking about plastics. Boy, have you listened to what the global meeting was, has been saying about problems of plastic? I really came tonight to talk about, there's, Severn River Association's gotten involved about trying to, well, they're trying, they're trying to deal with the sediment control, and the people who are doing this have never come to the big parts where there's lots of sediment. You know, I, you know, I bring in pots. They never looked at the pots. Excuse me.
that's going on. I cannot tell you how many people have come up to me and said, "This is not the Annapolis that I grew up in. It's not the Annapolis that I expected to be when I grew up. It's not the Annapolis where I fit in." I never go here, and I never go there, which were places that my family and I frequented. I think that there truly is need, you know, to be pretty serious about looking at some of the destruction that's going on. A lot of you know I live in the 7th region, and I fight to protect the trees, and they're just coming down as though, "Well, if you get out there in the dark of night, you know, who's going to go out and challenge the guy with the chainsaw?" You wait till morning, and they've already hauled away the firewood. And this is extremely disturbing because a lot of us have had enough education that we believe in and understand that the climate is changing. It is going to be a real problem. You know, we never had smoke coming down from Canada, forest fires, smoke, you know, and when that happened, I was one of the people who could not go out, you know, at all because of my vulnerability. And we know that it's a problem elsewhere. You know, you're going to be talking about plastics. Boy, have you listened to what the global meeting has been saying about problems of plastic? I really came tonight to talk about, several river associations gotten involved about trying to, well, they're trying to deal with the sediment control, and the people who are doing this have never come to the big parts where there's lots of sediment. You know, I bring in plots. They never looked at the plots. Excuse me, they took one plot. They don't know what they're doing.
So, thank you, Ms. Johnson. It's good to see you again. We haven't seen you for a while.
Thank you. You're really kind. I appreciate that.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Please come up to the table and state your name, address, and topic before making your remarks. Remarks are limited to two minutes. Mr. Swenson?
Kurt Swenson, Arnold, Maryland. I'm here talking about structural budget concerns. Surprise, surprise. As the former Assistant Budget Officer with a 25-year career spanning six different Anarondale County executives, I know a thing or two about the county's budget and finances. After retiring about three years ago, I've dedicated myself to sharing this knowledge and challenging public officials and fellow citizens alike to make our local government better and more transparent. Over the past few years, I've reminded you that the nondiscretionary costs we struggle with today were born from the discretionary decisions made in the past. More specifically, I've called out several pieces of legislation and budget proposals for their fiscal shortsightedness. Unfortunately, tonight's agenda, Bills 86, 89, 90, provide a virtual smorgasbord of examples of fiscal shortsightedness. Citizens also have a responsibility to understand these often complex matters so they can hold their elected representatives accountable. However, without full access and unspun information, that's impossible. It's precisely this lack of understanding that lies at the root of much of the mistrust and anger that so often erupts and frustrates all involved. This is why I'm continuing to explore ways to ensure ordinary citizens have access to and the education to understand the information necessary to fulfill their collective civic duty. Without full information, there's no chance for full understanding, and without full understanding, there's no chance for accountability. So I'll see you later tonight. Thanks.
Ms. Leahy?
Good evening. Amy Leahy, and I am in Severna Park, and I speak on behalf of myself this evening as opposed to other hats I wear usually. What I would like to bring up is, we have speed cameras here in Anarondale County that I believe when this council passed the speed camera law, it was only to be in school zones. Well, this seems to have now expanded to other areas of the county where someone will get a warning if they're 12 miles an hour over the speed limit, and this will be in two places that are coming up in Anarondale County right now: Jessup Road and Patuxent Road in Odenton. I don't believe there are any schools nearby. But these cameras will be 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and a $40 fine, which to me seems is just nothing but a money grab on the part of the county council, not county, but the county government, sorry, I don't mean to blame you guys, but the county government. So I would love to know when this changed so that now we're not just, you know, going into school zones where there was a safety issue. I remember there was a lot of discussion about safety and children and all that. So I know you're not allowed to answer questions, but I would love to know at some point in time. Thank you.
And I will just clarify, the one on Patuxent Road, there is a preschool at that location. It is a school.
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
No, go ahead.
I was just going to confirm that the one on Jessup Road, Jessup Elementary is right outside, and the community requested it. They fought hard for that one that's at that intersection, so it's definitely community-driven at that location specifically.
Back and forth, that's just clarifying.
I was just going to say, the one in Jessup is specific state legislation was passed to authorize that speed camera at the request of the community.
So, sir.
Good evening. Giovanni Di Amici, I live in Cawton. I'd like to talk about Bill 9224.
So, sir, that will be on the agenda later, and you can come speak at that time. Thank you. All right. All right. If there's no one else to speak, the invitation to audience is now closed. Is there any item any council member would like to place on the agenda? Okay. May I have a motion that the partial reading of any bill, resolution, amendment to a bill or resolution, or minutes constitutes the reading of the whole?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of November 18th, 2024.
The county council meeting was called to order by Chair Pickard at 7:01 PM. It was opened with the invocation given by Mr. Volkey and was followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. The meeting was held in the county council chambers in Annapolis, Maryland.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of November 18th, 2024?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. The minutes of November 18th, 2024 stand approved as read. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of the bills to be introduced this evening.
Bill Number 9724, An Ordnance Concerning Zoning: Requirements for Conditional Uses School Bus Facilities.
Oh, that's all. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of the resolutions to be introduced this evening.
Resolution Number 5124, Resolution Approving the Private Disposition of Certain Improved County-Owned Property Known as a Portion of Magathie Bridge Road Adjacent to the Early Heights Volunteer Fire Company in Severna Park, Maryland.
All right. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 8824.
Bill Number 8824, An Ordnance Concerning the Authorization of the Issuance, Sale, and Delivery by Anarondale County, Maryland From Time to Time of Special Taxing District Obligation Refunding Bonds in an Aggregate Principal Amount Not to Exceed $30 Million to be Secured by Special Taxes to Refund All or a Portion of the County's Special Tax District Bonds, The Villages at Two Rivers Project, Series 2014, and the Determination of Certain Terms and Provisions in Connection with the Issuance, Sale, and Payment of Such Bonds.
All right. The administration, this is your bill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration with me at the table. I have Lori Blair Klosmeyer from the Office of Law, Ryan Schenk and Billy Penley from the Office of Finance, Christopher Sheehan from Mesro Capital Public Finance, and David Gregory from our Bond Counsel McKenon Shelton &amp; Hen. We did discuss Bill 8824 at the work session about three weeks ago, but this is intended to authorize the refunding of previously issued special tax bonds for the Villages at Two Rivers. The goal of this refunding process is to capitalize on savings from reduced borrowing costs. This reduction in borrowing expenses will translate into lower special tax rates, which will benefit property owners within the Two Rivers Special Tax District by reducing the amount applied to their property tax bills. It will reduce debt services costs by securing a lower interest rate. It will provide savings over time by reducing the annual payments that are needed, which results in long-term savings for the property owners. It reduces the financial burden on those property owners, which also makes the properties more attractive to potential buyers, potentially increasing property values within the special taxing district. And obviously, higher property values result in increased property tax revenues and help fund county government services, but also make Anarondale County a more attractive place to live. And it reduces the default risk for these bonds as lower annual payments can help prevent default situations by making the special taxes more manageable. I'm not sure if anyone else at the table wants to add anything, but if someone could speak to how much this will save the property owners over the long term, that would be helpful.
Good evening. This is Christopher Sheehan. It should save each homeowner approximately about $80 a year for a total magnitude of about $1,300 to $1,400 in totality, which across, you know, approximately 2,000 homes is significant savings.
Is there any discussion? I do have one question. So that's the individual savings that you said. What are we looking at as a total on these bonds?
Total magnitude on a net present value savings, I believe, is, bear with me one second, is 1.9 million.
That's a nice savings, and that's a nice individual savings for the homeowners as well. So, thank you. All right. Open the public hearing on Bill Number 8824. Madam Secretary, do we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
Okay. We will now call on individuals who signed up ahead of the meeting. I don't believe we had anyone signed up for this, so, and, okay, where am I? Sorry, I'm following my script, folks. Is there anyone here now who wishes to speak on Bill Number 8824? So the public hearing on Bill Number 8824 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 8824.
Bill Number 8824, An Ordnance Concerning the Authorization of the Issuance, Sale, and Delivery by Anarondale County, Maryland From Time to Time of Special Taxing District Obligation Refunding Bonds in an Aggregate Principal Amount Not to Exceed $30 Million to be Secured by Special Taxes to Refund All or a Portion of the County's Special Tax District Bonds, The Villages at Two Rivers Project, Series 2014, and the Determination of Certain Terms and Provisions in Connection with the Issuance, Sale, and Payment of Such Bonds.
Okay. Since there are no technical or any amendments, we go ahead and vote, right? I'm asking you. Yeah? Okay. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 8824.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodbien.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Motion to call the vote. I don't need to? Oh, okay. I'm learning. I'm learning.
Bill Number 8824 has passed.
All right. Okay, one down. Thank you all. All right. I'll get there. I'll get there. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 7524.
Bill Number 7524, An Ordnance Concerning Boards, Commissions, and Similar Bodies: Subdivision and Development, Zoning, Development, Mixed-Use Districts.
Okay. Get everybody up there. All right. This is administration bill. Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration with me at the table. I have Jansen Evelyn, our Deputy Chief Administrative Officer for Land Use, Lynn Miller from the Office of Planning and Zoning, and Kelly Kenny from the Office of Law. We've heard this bill a number of times, but just to refresh everyone, Bill 7524 will revise and update the zoning and development regulations that apply in mixed-use districts to better align them with policies and recommendations in Plan 2040 and the region plans. It will allow for more cohesive and well-designed mixed-use developments in the future with greater flexibility in accordance with adopted land use plans. I know there are a number of amendments to be discussed, so if, sorry with the council, we'll just hop into those. Happy to answer any questions if anyone has any.
Is there any discussion before amendments? We've already had a public hearing on this, correct?
We have a public hearing.
Oh, okay. All right. I'm getting it. So if there's no discussion, we will have now opened the public hearing on Bill Number 7524. Madam Secretary, do we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
Okay. We will now call on individuals who signed up ahead of the meeting. I don't have that in front of me. Did we have anyone sign up ahead of time, Madam Secretary?
No, we did not, Madam Chair.
If there's anyone here who now wishes to speak on Bill Number 7524? Come up? All right. Please come up to the table and have a seat. When it's your turn, state your name and address for the record. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. Please listen for the buzzer and respect the two-minute time limit as others are signed up to speak. If you have more than two minutes to share, I'm going to ask you to submit your additional thoughts using our online testimony tool. Ms. Muller?
Yeah, Gary Muller from Jessup. We're the victims of these flexibility bills. This bill in particular, I think, is going to be a long-term damage to the county by increasing the density, which then therefore puts a strain on transportation and every other service: police, fire, hospital services, medical services, and so on and so forth. Schools is also in there. So, you know, to me, there was a lot of issues with 7224, which now are trying to get corrected. And I think the same situation here with 7524, it's not ready for prime time. You didn't get the inputs from the P A B. You didn't get good, take advantage of the collective wisdom of Anarondale County citizens. And I think you need to take and do more due diligence before you would ever even possibly consider passing this bill that has such a wide range of impacts across the whole county. And it definitely goes against what the citizens have begged to, please keep the density lower. We don't want more traffic. We want infrastructure before you go hog wild, building and building. I think there's ways to do it right, and I think other counties have examples that ought to be explored and considered before you go off and pass this bill at this point. We have an issue in Jessup specifically about the mixed use that the Region 2 put in the plan, and we were blindsided by that. We were told that that was not going to affect us unless it came back before the council. And what has happened is that now you're going to leave a bureaucrat to decide what is going to happen to the citizens of Jessup.
Thank you, sir. So, if there's no one else, the public hearing on Bill 7524 is now closed. And now, Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 7524.
Bill Number 7524, An Ordnance Concerning Boards, Commissions, and Similar Bodies: Subdivision and Development, Zoning, Development, Mixed-Use Districts.
All right. We have a number of amendments. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 10.
Amendment Number 10, this amendment requires that if a sector plan or study is required by the general development plan or a region plan, it must be completed and recommend rezoning to a mixed-use district before a property can be administratively rezoned to a mixed-use district and make certain rezoning restrictions for the administrative hearing officer and Board of Appeals consistent.
Mr. Smith, this is your amendment.
I'm reading other amendments. Thank you, Madam Chair. This was in concert with the administration. We had talked about a number of different solutions to try to get some more teeth into ensuring that the community would have some sort of process that allows them to get some feedback, and I think this was that effort to try to accomplish that. And then Ms. Miller is here, and Jansen is there as well. And so out of that phone conference, this was one of the amendments that allowed that process to go forward or to take place. Is that correct? Ms. Miller?
Yes, more or less.
Of the more or the less? Which?
Yes, I believe that's what we discussed, Councilman Smith.
Okay. Thank you. So this was a sector plan and some other provisions that would allow to come back to the public. It's an additional process that would be required. Okay?
So, Councilmember Smith, to be clear. Unfortunately, I was not there. I was out on leave at the time. But as I understand it from having the subsequent discussions with staff, I know that this Amendment Number 10 was what was discussed, drawing that meeting as a way to give you more of the assurances that you were looking for. And so in terms of, from the administration's standpoint, we're not opposed to this amendment. This was something that was done, that was workshopped with Office of Planning and Zoning staff.
Correct. The sector plan, though it's not a legislative process, so for those that aren't aware, if a community doing the region plan and in the plan stated that there was a, this was a potential use for a mixed-use area, if that property owner in the future decides to request a mixed-use designation for it, they can request that from the county. The county then has the authority to initiate that process through the planning officer, if I'm correct. And then, but during that process, they're required to produce a sector plan for that process as it unwinds. It still doesn't give us, the council... It still doesn't give us, the council, the ability to sort of determine kind of what it should be via legislation, but it's an added layer of transparency, I would say, that allows the administration to, forces the administration to communicate with the communities that are impacted. That was my assumption when it came to this amendment.
All right.
Motion to adopt.
Okay.
Second.
Do I have a second? Okay. All right. I see you have your light on.
Sorry. I'm good.
Okay. Is there any discussion on this amendment? All right. All right. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 10.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodbien.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 10 to Bill 7524 has been adopted.
Okay. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 11.
Amendment Number 11. This amendment requires that notice of a proceeding involving certain administrative rezonings to a mixed-use district, whether before the administrative hearing officer or the Board of Appeals, be provided to the council member for the district of the property affected, and if applicable, to the council member of the abutting property affected.
Mr. Smith, this is your amendment.
Essentially, a notice amendment where it requires the county to alert the council members when these requests come in from the property owners so that we are certainly aware of any pending rezoning process that may come out of this. Again, there potentially will be 25 mixed-use areas once we're done with the rezoning process, and 11 of those are in District One. And so, I have a very desirable sort of, or desire to have notification of everything that's happening in the district, because these could have significant impacts with the properties that are zone mixed-use, certainly within District One. So, motion to adopt.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Administration, have any comment on this amendment?
Similar to Amendment Number 10, this was also worked, this was, this amendment results out of the discussion with the council member, Councilmember Smith, to give the additional layer of notice and transparency that the council member was looking for. So, the administration does have an opposition to this amendment.
Okay. So, is there any further discussion? Mr. Smith? Okay. All right. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 11.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodbien.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer. Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 11 has been adopted.
All right. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 12.
Amendment Number 12. This amendment clarifies that the uses in the W-1 district are allowed as permitted uses where the requirements of Section 188301(c) are met.
All right. This is my amendment. This is just to, just what it says, that W-1 are allowed in the permitted areas for this. Motion to adopt.
Rodbien, second.
Okay. Administration?
We support this amendment.
Okay. All right. Is there any discussion? Ms. Rodbien?
Thank you. I think this is maybe a technical question, but if there are, if there are requirements to be met, isn't that sort of by definition conditional?
That is a question for Ms. Miller.
I'm actually not sure I understand the question, Ms. Rodbien. Sorry.
To, just, and to be clear, I take your look at Amendment Number 12, and you're looking at what is, where it says permitted and conditional uses? Is that correct?
Right. It says, in the description of the amendment, it says permitted where the requirements of 188301(c) are met. Doesn't that create a condition, making this? Kelly County Supervising County Attorney, let me see if I can help answer that. The uses, so in subsection C, if you turn to page 17 of the bill, the uses are, it's already stated that the uses allowed in W-1 are permitted in those certain zones if the site is within the airport no zone or on land that's been remediated and some other conditions. So, it's not really a conditional use. It's actually permitted by the terms of this. This just puts it in the use chart and puts it in the light industrial category for clarification as to what category it's in. Thank you. You're the attorney. I'll take your word for it.
So, all right. If there's no other discussion, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 12.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodbien.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer. Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 12 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 13.
Amendment Number 13. This amendment increases the maximum building height in the MXD-U district from 168 feet to 180 feet.
So, this is my amendment. This is just a clarification. This came up last meeting when we passed a amendment changing the heights in one of the districts, and this is just making it consistent so that the height limitations for the MXD urban and suburban are the same, so that our urban district is not shorter than our suburban district. So, motion to adopt.
Rodbien, second.
All right. Administration, have any?
This is, we, the administration supports this amendment. This is something that we would have introduced had the council member not introduced it.
So, is there any discussion on this amendment? Mr. Smith?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So, currently, there are three urban mixed-use districts. Do you know, are you familiar with Concord Circle? I guess I'll ask the, I guess I was the sponsor. Are you familiar with Concord Circle?
I am not.
It's over by, it's by the airport. And I guess I was, the rationale on, there's another Ridge mixed-use area that's also by, off of, by the mall, actually. I think it's towards that, what do you call that? The car rental place over in that sort of general vicinity by the mall. Was there a reason we had initially designated those urban? I don't know. Who can answer that question? It's just...
I'll try to answer that, Councilman Smith. Again, when this bill was crafted, it was much more about being used for future mixed-use sites. The focus wasn't necessarily on each existing mixed-use site and what that should be converted to. We were trying to create five new mixed-use zones, but at the same time, we wanted to make sure that the existing mixed-use zones would translate as best we could, given that there's several of them and they're all different. That's why we have two or three different types of grandfathering clauses in this bill to protect any of those existing mixed-use sites that are in place now. So, I'm not sure what your question specifically is related to the Ridge mixed-use project, but the project can be grandfathered to continue under the current code. If it elects to do something under the new code, they could submit a new development application.
No, I think, for me, because I was, you know, the three that are there, I think my colleague to the, on the second district, the Telegraph Road and 100 certainly is impacting us as well. But the other two, the Concord Circle and the Ridge mixed-use, I mean, I think this goes back to what I had said before in previous testimony. I kind of wish I was involved in the beginning of this, because some of those areas, as we were debating what type of mixed-use they should be or would be, I would have probably had a different opinion in that process. And so, now, I'm sort of in this situation where I'm having to sort of, you know, have these areas that, in my mind, aren't necessarily ideal for their current designation. I didn't get that choice. And so, that's the only reason I'm being overly sensitive, because I do understand the, and this isn't a hit, this isn't a hit at you all, I wouldn't be doing my job as a council member if I didn't bring the frustrations of the district back to this body about this particular legislation. And so, I just want to make sure that I'm on a record and clear about my desire to, I wish I would have been involved in the redesignation of these parcels, because I would not have made that urban, is probably my biggest complaint. Because in those areas, the 150 probably would have been sufficient, because it's literally right next to the airport, one of the runway paths. And the Ridge mixed-use area portion of that, like, I would not have made, I don't know if I would have, I don't know if I would have made that urban, because I didn't necessarily have that opportunity. But I guess I'm trying to find the logic, because the three that are, the 180 will impact these three parcels, two certainly are holistically in District One. And so, I'm just trying to figure out, is that, is it the right place for the tallest buildings when they're right next to BWI? That was my previous comments previously. I don't know if you're going to answer it. Maybe I'm just venting.
I do understand your point, Councilman Smith. One thing to note, the Concord Circle project is completely built out. So, I think that's, you know, this legislation is not, you know...
So, why would we make it U, though? Why would we make it mixed U?
Well, it's already zoned mixed T, so according to the bill, it would transfer to mixed U. But that's a development project where I think the bill is not going to have an impact because the project's already completely built out and developed.
If those buildings were demolished for some reason, not saying here in the next 10 years, but if for some reason they were, could they then be redesigned under these current standards?
Yes. The site, if the site were going to be developed newly, then somebody could come in with a new development application under the allowances of this bill.
Check. Good. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? So, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 13.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodbien.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 13 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 14.
Amendment Number 14. This amendment clarifies the grandfathering provisions to allow applications associated with grandfathered plans filed before the effective date of Bill Number 7524 to be filed after the effective date of Bill Number 7524 and be governed by the law as it existed prior to the effective date of Bill Number 7524.
So, this is my amendment. Again, this is just a clarification of some existing grandfathering that we have to make sure some of our existing projects are able to continue under their plans. Do I have a motion to adopt? Oh, I make a motion to adopt. The second, okay. Administration, do you have any input on this bill? On this amendment?
We do not oppose this amendment.
Okay. All right. Is there any further discussion on this amendment? All right. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 14.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodbien.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 14 has been adopted.
Okay. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 15.
Amendment Number 15. This amendment decreases the minimum site size for mixed-use districts from five acres to three acres.
Mr. Smith, this is your amendment.
All right. Now, had I been involved in this bill from the beginning, there are some areas that, for District One, I think are ideal for development, and I pointed it out in some subsequent meetings. This being one of them. This amendment is on the heels of a conversation that we had over, at least with the potential builders or developers, as well as here recently with the administration today. So, I don't want to make it seem like they've had months or weeks to think about this. And part of the area that is ideal for some development does have a overlay and some other conditions that would make the five acre a little bit more cumbersome. And I think we were trying to align it just for that specific parcel, but I think this language is more broader. So, I wanted to see if the admin was okay with that when we get to this. But, you know, motion to adopt.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Yes, the council member is correct. We had a conversation earlier, or early this evening, about this potential amendment. And I can tell you that OBZ staff, when we were looking at the, when we were drafting this legislation, we had initially thought about utilizing three acres as opposed to five. So, we support this amendment.
Is there any further discussion on this amendment? Mr. Smith, you're good.
I'm sorry.
All right. All right. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 15.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodbien.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative. Amendment Number 15 has been adopted.
Okay. All right. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 16.
Amendment Number 16. This amendment adds a provision to allow certain sites subject to a BRAC-phased mixed-use development plan on a site outside of the four-mile radius referenced in Section 1810-112A1 to develop a mixed-use development in accordance with the BRAC-phased mixed-use development plan considered as a whole and not on an individual lot basis.
Okay. Mr. Smith, this is your amendment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You guys don't have the, this was, we suspected that this note possibly would be introduced. There were conversations around it, but I haven't seen what was filed. So, if you give us a moment. Before they win, this particular amendment, and I want you to, there's a couple of key words in there, BRAC-mixed-use-phase development. This amendment applies to one parcel. There are no other parcels, at least of my knowledge, that would be impacted by this. It's, in my mind, ideal for development, which is where I would want some mixed-use development to occur. This is by the, in the vicinity of the BWI car rental place. So, it's in that vicinity of the district. We had some conversations earlier this evening, and I wanted to make sure we had the language correct to what we had at least talked about on the phone. But the concept was to ensure that that southern portion was not excluded from some of the conditions that are put into 7524. So, that's what this bill or this amendment was attempting to do. But I want to make sure we capture that right in words, because words do matter when we vote on these things. And so, I would certainly like to hear the administration's stance on some of this verbiage.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to adopt.
Do I have a second?
Rodbien, second.
Give the administration a moment?
Yes. Thank you for giving us the moment, and thank you for the explanation. This reflects the conversation we had earlier. And while the language looks drastically different from what was originally sent over earlier in the afternoon, the administration is okay with this language as opposed to the, what was sent over earlier this afternoon. So, we are, we are not opposed to this amendment.
Is there any further discussion? Ms. Pickard?
I don't understand the amendment. So, okay, so can we break it down a little bit? Since we're all just seeing it this evening, so...
No.
Somewhere, there's a... So somewhere, there's a BRAC phased mixed use development plan.
That is correct.
Okay. But it's, it's on a site that's outside the four mile radius.
So there, yes.
Currently it's limited to inside four mile radius.
So, so there was a grandfathering provision in the previous bill that had happened a couple, number of years ago, not a couple of years ago. And that parcel is, is Eritropolis. Have you heard of that particular portion? So it's that south, Eritropolis south portion of, of the land that, with the grandfathering piece, because the way the, the previous bill was written, and once we complete the compre zoning that is taking place right now, it will allow some double uses on those same parcels where they're already having mixed use sort of element. So the, the issue that they had was that the, the current bill, when it, if it passes, right, it'll require them to do a dual use on the parcels that they are developing. This is, is, is an effort to allow them to use the entire parcel as that mixed use designation instead of the language that is in, I know it, because this thing is coming very fast, we don't have a lot of time with this bill because it expired, or at least has one more meeting before it expires. So we were trying to rush, get these amendments in today because the next one is the final day of the bill. But in essence, there was a portion of land that was designated grandfathered in that is connected to some, some uses that if the, one, the compre zoning plan that we're going through right now passes, it would impact that land. So this prevents the dual uses that is required under this bill from impacting that parcel when the compre zoning bill passes. Please tell me I got most of that right. Because it's, because we're doing about a thousand things at the same time. So I'll turn it over to Jansen.
So to try to make this as like simple and basic as possible, as he mentioned, this, as I understand it, the council member, council member's amendment is specific to a particular development site, Eritropolis. And while it's our position that this language, that 7524 as amended already protects and doesn't require that level of dual use in, in, in the BRAC mixed use development plan, we also understand the council members' need, or the council members' desire to ensure that development in that development site, Eritropolis, goes forward. We had a conversation with them maybe hour ago, hour and a half ago. And, and I think this language, not I think, this language, while I, granted, I'm now seeing it, this language reflects that conversation. Again, to be clear, we did not believe when we first received this and we had the reaction that this amendment was necessary, but also have, after having a conversation with the council member, after hearing the desire that he wanted to, to, to have carved out, we, we, how do I say this in the best way? We feel that this language does not harm our bill as currently amended. And so we are not opposed to this legislation.
Ms. Pickard.
Is this, is this something that could also be accomplished through just compre zoning? I'm just trying, I still don't quite understand what we're doing here, but.
Yes.
So this isn't, this then, this amendment through this bill isn't considered some sort of spot zoning?
You're asking.
I'm asking you. I'm asking someone at the table.
Kelly Gunning, Supervising County Attorney. From my understanding of this site, which is more limited than their understanding because I wasn't involved in the, in the discussions, I don't think this would constitute spot zoning because it sounds like it's really allowing them to retain the, some protections that they already have under the code. I don't think it, it doesn't do any rezoning by, on its face.
Okay. Mr. Volkey.
What are they allowed to do now? What are they allowed to do under 7524 if this is not a amendment? Like, what's the difference? I'm still not following this. Because I'm with Ms. Pickard. I mean, you can solve this in compre zoning. This is one property. It looks like it's right outside the airport, 10 minutes away. It's like a big transit hub, Eritropolis South BWI. Is that it? Is that the right place? So what can they do now? And what is it?
I thought you were answering the council number.
No, no, I was looking for somebody in the audience real quick. I was trying to find a friend.
I'm asking you guys because you all are the experts, so.
Yeah, but to be fair to them, it's only been within the last couple of hours that we've dove into this conversation, simply because, no, I know, I know. There is a perception by the, the team that's up there that without this specific language, there is a portion, half of the property was in the BRAC mixed use, that other portion wasn't. So, and the, the compre zoning may allow, if, actually, I only think it's compre zoning, it might be a completely separate bill with the, with the lines of the overlay, which, which may be something in addition to that. But nonetheless, this bill requires them to perform, in their minds, multiple uses on a parcel where, whether it's residential and something else on that particular parcel, whereas right now, they can do and/or on their parcel. But their interpretation of this law in the legislation, if it's passed, is that it will require them to do both or multiple things on a three or five acre parcel, where right now, they've already started building out and they have residential on one piece. They're looking at, they want us to look at the lot as a whole, the project as a whole, instead of these five acre parcels where they're performing multiple things on it. So it's their interpretation that this will remediate that issue. The administration believes, is a hundred percent of the, of the stance that that is the case, which is why they said that they don't think it causes them any harm. But the folks that are building up there now believe that it requires them to do multiple things on their land, which would impact their property or their project.
Ms. Pickard.
So this is a project that has been building out in phases.
In phases, yes.
And they would like this one phase to be able to just do one use and associate the mixed use designation with properties that have, already have multiple uses on them? So they would only have to do one use on the remaining parcel?
It is currently labeled a BRAC mixed use phase development plan that they've already had approved previously. And so it's because they had it approved previously, that nomenclature, that designation specifically, doesn't allow them to meet the, the standards of this current bill. And so they're trying to make sure the language is clarified in there that specifically these mixed use phase development plans will be allowed to continue in their normal sort of execution of the, the project without having to do the dual use on the parcels that exist with 7524's requirements.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you. So what I'm hearing, and I could be wrong, right? I reserve the right to be incorrect on this. But what I am hearing is that they're trying to daisy chain parcels effectively. And they've got some that are in the BRAC overlay, they've got some that are outside. They own all of them. They want to develop them as one common site, but they're different parcels. And so some of the, so it's not like there's one parcel that's got the overlay in part of it and the other part is out. These are actually different parcels that are outside of the overlay. Am I correct on that?
Yes, there's 15 that are contiguous that are outside of the overlay, yes.
Understood. But they're contiguous with property that they also own that's inside the overlay.
I don't think so. Because I know Eritropolis North and South are in two different.
How are they developing it all together if it's not?
I believe that Mr. Volkey is correct in that the project, part of the project was grandfathered to be able to use BRAC mixed use development, but I think there's some additional lots or parcels that are not. And so while, while the part that's grandfathered to be able to use BRAC mixed use development does not currently have to meet any mixed use requirements because BRAC mixed use is exempt from the mixed use requirements. I think their concern is they want to be able to develop the remaining phases or lots or parcels of that project and not be required to meet the, under the new bill, you're required to have two different use categories. Or under, if they used grandfathering, under the current bill, you have mixed use percentage requirements. Again, we heard about this an hour ago. I did not have time to check the latest status of that development project, so it's a little hard to speak to right now. But I do believe that is what they're trying to accomplish. If so, I, as Mr. Evelyn stated, I don't think that this will harm the entirety of the bill as, and what we're intending to accomplish with the bill.
And the reason I was even supportive of even trying to assist is where they are building, you know, we talk about driving development. In my mind, that portion of where this particular project is, is where we should be, at least for District One. I can't speak for you, for the rest of the council medic district, but in my area, this is where I would want development to occur, not in Jessup or on that, that bridge road portion. This is exactly where I, I am encouraging and hoping that development could occur because it's, it's an ideal parcel that doesn't, that has some significant use. So we're talking about housing. Well, I'm telling you as, as the representative of the area, this is where I want it, this is where I want the development. And so if this makes it easier or gives them some, some, some level of comfort of, if this bill passes, then I want them to still be able to continue with these new categories and, and requirements and not be impacted by that. So that was the only reason I was motivated to assist in that effort. I know it's complicated at this last minute, but, you know, I didn't have, I didn't have a year to work on this. So I'm trying to, trying to fix what I can.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Smith, I appreciate that. And obviously, you are the representative for District One. So by and large, if this only applies to your district, I defer to you. I just want confirmation from you all that there are no other properties that are outside of District One that would be touched by this. I'm assuming they're not because it's BRAC related, but I don't know, maybe four? We, I don't know that you know. You had an hour.
I was going to say, absent us having the appropriate time to thoroughly review, we can't definitively say yes or no. But, but we don't believe that there, that this will have a significant impact outside of this one site.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Ms. Smith? Okay. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 16.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Feedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 16 has been adopted.
All right. Bill Number 7524 will be heard on December 16th, 2024. All right. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 7824.
Bill Number 7824, An Orange Concerning Subdivision and Development Road Design.
Administration, this is your bill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration with me at the table. I have Jansen Evelyn, Christine Nieder from the Office of Law, Lynn Miller and Sarah Fowler from the Office of Planning and Zoning, and Raghu Badami from Inspections and Permits. So we did discuss this bill at a work session, I believe it was in October, and we've heard it a couple of times since then. But just to refresh everyone's memory, so currently, Anorundale County is the only large county in the state of Maryland that does not require properties that are being developed to make frontage improvements to the road in front of a property to design manual standards as a general condition of development. Some examples from other counties in Maryland that have this requirement are Prince George's, Montgomery, Howard, Queen Anne's, and Baltimore Counties. This bill proposes an update to the road design requirements to clarify when road frontage and right-of-way dedication and improvements are required for new developments. As an example, these improvements may include curb and gutter improvements, sidewalks, lighting, and other frontage improvements, such as construction of the road to full design manual standards. Also clarifies declaration requirements for private roads and requires that when a developer includes new private roads in a development, they must record in the land records that the cost and maintenance for the private roads shall be on the community association or HOA, the council of unit owners for condo regime, or in the absence of those, the homeowners of the units that have bought a private road. This aligns our legislation with best industry practice, other major jurisdictions that already have this requirement in place. And if this legislation passes, would take the burden off of the taxpayers in the county to come behind and follow up to provide those improvements. We're happy to answer any questions. I know some council members may have some questions that we're happy to answer.
All right. Do you have any questions? Ms. Pickard.
So we, this has been a bit of a, feel like a private investigator trying to understand the ramifications of this bill. I put that in writing in an email, so I know you all have already seen that. Can you all talk a little bit more specifically about this bill and how it will impact redevelopment, revitalization, tenant changes, tenant fitouts on properties? You did reply with some answers. I'm not sure I a hundred percent agree with the answers you sent me with the way things happen now. So I'm going to stop at that question and let you all answer. We've had a hard time getting a real dialogue going with this bill. So I'm hoping we can do that tonight.
Good evening, Sarah Fowler, Planning and Zoning. So this would not apply to tenant improvements and modifications to existing structures, excuse me, that would generate more than, fewer, excuse me, than 50 additional daily trips. So in a shopping center, we don't test, you know, a retail business to a retail business. It doesn't go through APF. It's considered to be the same number of trips. So anything in, in an existing shopping center, something like that would generally, I can't give a hundred percent, but generally would not have to do any improvements.
So, so everyone at the table is saying that when we do tenant fitouts and change of use in a strip center, that we're, properties don't go through site development plans?
If, if it's strictly a change in tenant in an established shopping center, no. It would just go through a tenant permit with inspections and permits typically.
Generally typically. What about a vacant building?
It would really depend on the use and how long it's been vacant.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Madam Chair.
Raghu Badami, inspections and permits. If there is intensification proposed, there would be site development plan required sometimes. It really depends on what is being proposed, when was the project approved, what is currently being proposed. If it triggers APF, say for example, more than five EDUs, it would require STP requirements, which would kind of dovetail into other requirements.
Madam Chair. So in an existing retail center, when we have movement of uses and operators, they go in, they lease a property, and we know we have the EDU issue because we've been dealing with that separately. Now, we're saying, in a strip center that already exists, if you have to go, if it's an intensification and you're going through a site development plan, now you've got to look at your road frontage too, in a strip center that's already in existence? Or is that generally typically not what happens?
Generally, yeah, I'm going to use that a lot. It's one of my favorites. A shopping center is usually tested as a shopping center, and that includes a variation of uses. We don't test, you're going to have two banks and three restaurants and four closed stores. It's just a shopping center. So if you're taking one shopping center use and replacing it with another shopping center, it's considered the same number of, of trips for traffic purposes.
Okay. Madam Chair.
So with the DPW design manual and the current orange notice 20- You're right, the modification would be the process by which they would get that flexibility, and we'd be able to run it by all the various departments that might have an interest in that road and that road design to determine what the needs are for the road. That's what the modification process does.
So, you know, in a, I'm sorry, Madam Chair. So in, obviously, you know, the main thing people think of when they think about road frontage improvements is residential, new subdivisions going in, and, and that, you can sort of understand what might happen, sidewalks and things like that. But this also, it, it isn't, nothing is delineated. I mean, this is about everything. So if we're trying to incentivize redevelopment and we're going to, this seems to me like we're adding some pretty intense burden that isn't even predictable to the business or new project. Am I the only one up here that has concerns about this?
No, just to make a good job.
Okay, okay. Has the administration run this through, like, economic development and, and those thought leaders about how this affects some of our other goals regarding redevelopment and revitalization, or even, and certainly current business parks that exist as they rotate tenants? Because we certainly don't want vacant buildings, and we certainly have them in the county.
With regards to that kind of development question, I, it's been so long we've been dealing with, working on this piece of legislation, I can't recall off the top of my head. In terms of major tenants, the, as Ms. Fowler stated a few moments ago, when some of these large developments, when they come on, when they come online, when they come on and they're being developed, a variety of uses are anticipated. And so when you go from one tenant to the next, it's not like you're going to have to be required to do all of this major frontage improvements. The reality is, other, the other jurisdictions, I understand these other jurisdictions are not Anorondal County, but what Ethan, what Mr. Hunt said earlier is that we're trying to align the, the requirements to provide frontage improvements in a way that's industry best practice. I will also want to remind the council that up until 20, and I may, correct me if I'm wrong, staff, but up until, I believe, 2019 or 2020, there was, there was frontage improvements, road frontage improvements that were required and, or recommended. And, and this language ultimately is being utilized to ensure that we return to that, but we also have the, the, the backing of the law. That's ultimately what this is about. In terms of impacts to, to, as you mentioned, Councilwoman Pickard, yes, this is a no-brainer when it comes to residential, but I would, I would also posit it's equally a no-brainer as when it comes to, when it comes to large-scale commercial, when you look at the, the, the level of impact on our, our infrastructure and our roadways that, that these major economic drivers have. And it's, it's, and I believe, was it Raghu? Maybe you can opine on that. But there, when you look at the cost that the county absorbs, having to do a lot of these frontage improvements, and it's a, it's a, it's a cost that the taxpayers are bearing that no other taxpayers in any of the big seven counties bear. So we wanted to, again, align with best prac, industry best practice, but also take the burden off the taxpayers.
Madam Chair.
Oh, Mr. Volkey, don't let me.
Mr. Volkey. You sure?
Yeah.
Okay. So, a couple things. The road frontage, correct, that was not in the code, but for some reason, developers in the county, in the county staff, in the county office of law, believed it was in the code. And so up until approximately 2019, 2020, that was something that was being required. I know this because I learned it. I had a Starbucks in my district. It was coming in at the intersection of Mountain Road and Temple Drive. And when it went in, originally, the plans called for it to have sidewalk in the front of it on Mountain Road, right? Road frontage improvements. And then all of a sudden, the developer had some problems with environmental stuff in the back of the property, and they shifted everything forward. They couldn't meet the requirements of the site if they had to do the road frontage improvement. So they challenged it, and they started pushing back on where this was, and then they discovered, hey, this wasn't in the code. And then everybody says, ta-da, we're gonna drop 20 years of practice and say you don't have to do it. So you're absolutely right. This was something that was kind of informally done. That's the history on why it stopped. I don't know whether that's the only instance in the county, but I knew that was one of them that was at sort of the front of this that caused the issue, because I talked with inspections and permits a lot about this one. That being said, the problem that I have with this bill, it's not the idea that you're saying there needs to be road frontage improvements. One of the things that Ms. Pickard highlighted that can't be overstated is that everything going back to the Design Manual means we have literally no say. We're just like, hey, bureaucrats, and no offense, but that's what everybody who works for the government is. They're a bureaucrat. You're in there, you're gonna make the rules, and you can change it whenever you want to, because administratively that's okay, and there's no public process. The development community, the building community, the commercial retail community, all these people have no input into what you're doing unless they know you're making the change, or they see it and they lodge that complaint, and then you all decide, oh, you know, we're gonna fix that. So that's a problem that I have with this, just from the way that you're doing it. On top of it, I've spoken to people in the community where you sought feedback a year ago. They gave you that feedback a year ago. Unfortunately, none of that feedback wound up in this bill. So as a result, this bill's in front of us, and the people who are really the subject matter experts on the other side, not the government side, who are doing this work, they're sitting there saying, we don't think this is gonna work. We think it's actually gonna have the inverse effect of what you want, because we're gonna build less stuff. So you think you're doing this and you're gonna make everything better, but in fact, we're just not gonna build anything, which then isn't what everybody in this county wants. I know that they run around and say, no building, no building. But if you stop building anything new, they're not gonna be real happy with that. So there's this give and take that has to exist. So my problem with this bill and the whole way that this is structured, and the fact that everybody's saying, well, it was a year ago, we don't remember it, is then why didn't the bill come sooner? Or why didn't that discussion continue with those folks? Why did none of that make it into the bill? Because those are the people who are actually gonna have to figure out a way to make this work if we were to pass this bill. And they're saying to me, and probably others on this council, this bill doesn't work.
I'll just quickly address that. It's, it's practiced by the administration to, to work with community stakeholders, those that are interested, and we, and we did that with this bill. Now, was there, was everything that the industry or the building industry that they wanted adopted or? No. But that's never the case. It's, like you mentioned, it's a give and take, and it's, and it's a give and take when we're balancing the needs of the public trust versus the need to continue to, to, to balance development. In terms of the, the runway, in terms of how long it took for this bill to ultimately make it to the council, as this council has seen over the course of the past year and a half, there's been a, a, a large influx of major legislation around land use, around housing. And when we look at scheduling and ordering out bills, we do these things in very intentional manner in terms of when they come in. This is a bill that, and I know Lynn has been, from the moment I entered this role, this is a bill that administration staff, they have wanted, they've wanted it in place ever since. I, I don't know if it was your particular development or your Starbucks development that ultimately caused Law to go and take a deeper dive, but this has been something that they've wanted to, that the major land use industries have wanted to course correct for the past several years.
Ms. Fedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just following up on Ms. Pickard's comments, in the last six years that I've been on the council, I think I can speak for my colleagues, I've experienced constituents or small businesses trying to take an existing building and go in in what they believe is a new business that doesn't require a site development plan. But lo and behold, the interpretation is that it does. So I think that that's the unpredictability that we're talking about. I know I had one small business that walked away because they could not pay for the site development plan and the anticipated EDU expenses, and the only reason that they pursued it is because they believed that they would not have to go through a site development plan. So that's my concern, because it really shuts out the little guys, the local owned businesses who interact with communities, and invites larger corporate organizations to come in. So I, I understand the attempt that's being made here, but in my opinion, this is not the bill that, that does it.
And I'm gonna, oh.
No, go ahead.
Yeah, just very quickly. And I want to be very mindful of not necessarily conflating two separate issues into this, or a separate issue into this bill. Yes, the administration, we've had lots of conversation around small businesses and when they are doing, what is it, whether it's tenant improvements, when you're, when, when, we've looked at how, and we're continuing trying to fine tune how to make Anorondal County a place that is, that is easy for small businesses to go off the ground. We, I've heard from maybe every member on this county council at some point over the past year and a half about some issue from a small business owner trying to navigate the many rules and regulations. One, that's par for the course, but two, yes, we can continue to, to, to make it as easy and transparent as possible. But to be clear, this is road frontage. This is not some of the, this is, this is not equivalent dwelling units. This is not some of the larger issues or bigger issues that we have heard from the development community. So while any bill can continually be fine tuned and improved, even after it's passed 7-0 by this council, the reality is that this is a bill that, 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 that staff, and, and honestly, the discussions I've had with the industry, maybe there's, maybe I need to go back and have another conversation, but the, the conversations that I've been having, there hasn't been that dramatic opposition. The reality is, no industry will want more regulation added that would potentially impact their bottom line. But the reality is, we have to take this off, we have to take this burden off Anorondal County taxpayers. I don't know if staff had anything additional that they wanted to add, because I may not have had the historical, no? Okay.
Ms. Pickard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you to my colleagues. I think there's, there's a couple distinctions that we need to make, not just for, for people here in the audience, people. A, a project that generates 50 additional trips is not a large development. It is not a large business park corporate development. It is very easily a vacant bank building becoming a Starbucks. And adding tremendous requirements with no flexibility doesn't allow a small business owner or someone in the process of redeveloping a site the opportunity to continue that work without the undue burden. And possibly, they will have entered into a lease or purchased a property unbeknownst to them will then be forced to abide by these mandates. I, I think, I under, we can talk all day long about what other jurisdictions are doing. You haven't actually laid it out for the council about what Howard County's policy looks like, and is it, is it really about large developments? Because there's no proportionality in this bill at all. It is a one-size-fits-all mandate, and it's concerning. And I think we, I passed a bill in 2020 to revitalize the Glenn Burney Sustainable Community Overlay. We've had one real redevelopment project, one. I got vacant gas stations and abandoned properties dotting, small properties dotting the community, and they're not just in, in my district. They're all over this county. And we're just making it harder. I'm not saying we don't need to do some sort of road frontage requirement, but I don't think this bill has taken into account a large project versus our small businesses and/or redevelopment. I'm, I'm just concerned about it, and it's been very difficult. Let me emphasize, it's been very difficult to understand this bill. We've not seen the Design Manual. We don't even know what it says, but there are parking lanes, bike lanes, sidewalks, median slope area, street tree area. There are a lot of requirements that now a little snowball shack going to a coffee hut could be slammed with, and then we end up with another vacant property. We have a lot of Royal Farms and Wawa's, don't, I have my lunch from Wawa today, and public storage. Public storage doesn't generate a lot of additional trips. I don't want every corner in Anorondal County to be public storage, green, blue, or orange. I would like to see cool stuff happening where we want it to, where our general development plan is seeking it to go. But if we aren't mindful about impacts like this being proportional, we're, we're gonna end up with blighted communities more than we already have. That's my concern. I think it's valid.
Can I say something?
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you. I also, I'm just gonna say this right from my seat up here. I'm tired of the over and over narrative that this administration plays, and I hear it from people who are constituents too, but the admin plays up on this all the time. There's doggone greedy developers. They're the worst, right? You may think they're all greedy developers, but we're up here talking about small business owners. We're not even just talking about developers. We're talking about people who are going into rundown storefronts, rundown buildings, purchasing them and saying, I'm trying to improve the community. I had to do a special bill for the coffee roasters a couple months ago just to help them go into an old Lucky store. So they were able to do that because they couldn't get any help from the county because there was no flex in the way the code was written, and there was no ability for them to be able to start that operation without me doing a bill. So this narrative of like, these terrible greedy developers, they've gotta pay their fair share, we've gotta get this off the backs of the taxpayers, come on. That's not what we're talking about. And it's frustrating. After six years of hearing it over and over from this administration, honest to goodness, I've reached the point where I'm just tired of hearing it. That's disingenuous. It's not what we're talking about. What we're talking about are small businesses coming in and potentially revitalizing blighted places in our communities, and you all putting this major hurdle on them, saying you gotta build sidewalks and setbacks and all these different things, when all they're trying to do is open up a storefront to take somewhere that was aborted down, shut down place and make it into something in their community. So I think that that's the piece that gets lost in this, and it's real easy for the newspaper or for you all or for whoever to write about these greedy developers. But let's get it straight about who we're talking about. That's not who we're talking about with this bill. There's a lot more to it than just that.
To take, personally take humbrage to, to, to that representation. The reality is, the, the reality is, we hear from constituents on a regular basis, and even today, we've heard people come up to this table and talk about, about how the, this administration is coming out with major land use legislation. So we view the building industry, just like we view our residents, as stakeholders, as partners in this. And so when we come up with a, whether it's a MPD legislation or in forthcoming redevelopment legislation that on one breath, people will come out and say, the Pittman administration is just over, opening this county to overdevelopment and making it a urban area, et cetera. But then when we also say-
What we're talking about are small businesses coming in and potentially revitalizing blighted places in our communities, and you all putting this major hurdle on them, saying you've got to build sidewalks and setbacks and all these different things, when all they're trying to do is open up a storefront to take somewhere that was aborted down, shut down place and make it into something in their community. So I think that that's the piece that gets lost in this, and it's real easy for the newspaper or for you all or for whoever to write about these greedy developers, but let's get it straight about who we're talking about. That's not who we're talking about with this bill. There's a lot more to it than just that.
Yes.
Yeah, just let me have. To take, personally take humbrage to, to that representation, the reality is, the reality is, we hear from constituents on a regular basis, and even today, we've heard people come up to this table and talk about, about how the, this administration is coming out with major land use legislation. So we view the building industry, just like we view our residents, as stakeholders, as partners in this, and so when we come up with a, whether it's a MPD legislation or in forthcoming redevelopment legislation, that on one breath, people will come out and say, the Pittman administration is just over, opening this county to overdevelopment and making it a urban area, et cetera. But then when we also say, hey, in order to have and pay for these infrastructure improvements and, and the impact and the burden on our roadways, those same partners have to pay their fa, fair share. It's, 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 it is disingenuous to come and say that that's what this administration is doing. Literally, as you yourself know, you know the history of this road frontage better than I do. The reality is, this is something that developers, builders, both commercial and residential, they paid, they did, they gave us right of ways so that taxpayers were not taking on that burden. For the reasons where it wasn't codified, that practice stalled for the past three to four years. And what this bill is, is an attempt to return to that practice to make sure that, that, again, taxpayers are not the ones that are paying for the run, the frontage improvements that are made to development, both residential and/or commercial. So again, I understand that this is a political body, and, and I know that there's a vote that it's going to be had sooner rather than later, but the reality is, this is a necessary bill. This is, this is something that, this is a piece of legislation this administration stands behind, and, and leave it to you.
Ms. Pickard.
So when somehow these requirements dropped out of the code and whatever, the code rewrite in 2005, is, are, are these the requirements that were required in 2005? And was there any flexibility?
I would defer to any representation, Lynn, Law Office of Law, I can't answer that question.
I can't speak to 2005, but when we were enforcing the frontage requirements, it was just to meet the design manual requirements. We didn't have any exceptions in it, but other than that, it was billed what the design manual requires.
And how often does the county come back and actually pay for road improvements? Because I don't think we've been doing that.
Well, Mr. Braun is on vacation, but he had, he had submitted to me two examples where he said that in one case, it was $135,000, in another case, it was $1,200,000. But in terms of, to answer your question specifically, I, I can't give you that tally.
So, sorry, Madam Chair, I'm used to just being able to talk. So we've had this sort of high level conversation, but you haven't really responded to the proportionality that I think we, some of us are concerned about, not, not large scale developments. I mean, this is, like I said, it's a one size fits all. Was there ever any consideration in your work group or in your stakeholder meetings to actually think about a graduated scale, like this is what, this is what's required at 50 trips, or this is what's required at 250 trips, or, or anything like that? Because this, I've been trying to understand this bill for, I don't know, a month now, and it's been very difficult to get any answers. I've said that twice now, so I just want to emphasize that. It's very complicated, and I have real concerns about us not being able to move forward with our small business owners and others not really concerned with Eritreopolis being able to meet their road frontage. They're going to meet their road frontage, it's, it's everybody else.
I defer to if anyone that was a part of this work group that's sitting at this table, I was not a part of that work group. Can anyone talk about the proportionality and if that was something that was discussed?
Sure, Lynn Miller, I can speak to it briefly, I think. One thing that we did take into consideration, because there's been a lot of discussion tonight about smaller businesses or wanting to not have overly burdensome requirements for businesses that want to redevelop or rehab an existing building and, you know, open up a small business. So we do have the administrative decision process that was codified a few years ago that will not address every case, but for many small businesses that want to locate in an existing structure and do some minor rehabs to it without significant expansion of floor area, they can go through the administrative decision process and be exempt from SDP, and if they're not generating more than 50 daily trips, they would also be exempt from traffic APF, which I believe means road improvements would not kick in. So there was consideration to some other things that are already in place and that have been passed recently that provide some level of relief to some of these smaller businesses or, you know, people who want to rehab an existing structure.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The, the manual, how far along, has that, has the process for modifying that already been started?
I can't 100% speak to, speak for DPW, but they have already started doing some minor revisions. I believe it's on about a six month cycle.
Is there, are there any, I guess, pre-drafts that will be afforded the opportunity to, to look at some of those?
I believe they are made public, but I, I don't know the process 100%.
Yeah, I think, I think for me, similar to the, the previous bill, sometimes I feel like we're putting the cart before the horse, where, where, where it's not sequential, because some of these things probably should have been resolved or at least reviewed previous to some of this other bigger, it's like, you know, I'm looking at a building and, and yeah, we're, we're talking about these grand big sort of directions, because we got comp rezoning going on right now, we have the, the housing bill, which, which obviously took on to a lot of issues with modifying some spaces, we have 7524, 7824, and it's all kind of happening all at the same time, and some of it, at least some sentences are, it's a little confusing, and so, and going forward, is there a way to make it more cleaner in how it's rolled out so that before we, because we, you know, sometimes I feel like we get the short end of the stick, because we get like a maybe 45 days notification that it's coming, and then we get like two months, whereas, you know, then we find out that a bill has been being worked on for like two years or three years, and so we don't have that same time window to make modifications or do reviews and things like that, or even hold town halls. Like if I wanted to hold town halls, a lot of these things, especially during the holidays, it's really hard to try to get the message out about some of these bills, but because they are massive in their effect, potential effect on communities, and so, not saying that anything in here is negative, but any stretch of the imagination, but it's the process that I'm probably more impacted by than, than actually what's in it and feeling like I'm at a disadvantage because I can't communicate it effectively to the people that, that we represent. And so that's, that's been my sort of frustration here recently. So that's all, Madam Chair.
Ms. Pickard.
So a few things. When we were entertaining a redevelopment bill last fall, I believe, the trigger was 250 trips. So I just want to set the level here of what we're talking about. This bill requires these mandates kick in at 50 trips, and those are, again, I can't, those are smaller projects. The other thing is, we seem to forget that all of these developments and projects also pay impact fees. So we're just keep piling on, and I believe we're going to see some information about the impact fee study, we're also going to see a transportation APF bill one of these days, and all of those things, sort of hard, we're, we're taking this road frontage bill outside of some other conversations, and it's just, it's a little concerning, I'm concerned about the, I'm concerned about this bill. I don't, I feel like we've not, I don't think it's quite hit in the mark today.
Any other comments or discussion? And where are we on this now? So now it's, we will now open the public hearing on Bill 7824. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
We will now call on individuals who signed up ahead of the meeting. Madam Secretary, did we have anyone sign up? Okay. So is there anyone else who, anyone here who would, wishes to speak on Bill number Okay. Please state your name and address for the record, remarks are limited to two minutes.
Gary Mahler, I live in Jessup, and we don't have roads in Jessup, in West County, we have parking lots. So roads, you start talking about roads, I get, I get excited about it. The, the concern, I haven't read the whole bill, but one of the concerns is that you guys have this thing called historic or scenic roads, and we have at least one road in Jessup that is classified as that, and the developers are happy because they don't have to make any improvements to it. So I hope that issue is addressed in this bill, that roads that are being developed now, because you pay a zoning that allows it, that those, those developers need to improve roads that are absolutely dangerous. And I really liked Jansen's argument this evening, I think he did a great job of expressing the administration's position, and I think it's very notable that he's trying to present an idea, which I think can be amended and approved and fixed, but when, when Pete and I leave our front door and we drive four miles west, we're in a, in a community where I see a quality streetscape. If we drive three miles to Fort Meade and other parts of Anarundel County, it's not the same, it's amazing the difference. I'm all for anything where we can improve the quality of our streetscape, and, you know, we have a development in Fort Meade, for example, brand new, it's not finished, and the, it's a housing, and the people's windows are about maybe eight to 10 feet off of 175. That is a nut, a nice thing to do to people in low income. You know, there's no reasonable setback, people walking the sidewalk, they're going to be banging on people's doors at night when the kids are trying to sleep. So anything that, that the administration can do to improve the life of our citizens, I'm all for.
Ms. Leahy.
Thank you. Amy Leahy, Severn Park, Maryland. I've just been jotting down notes as I've been listening to this whole conversation, and it, it sort of opens other doors that I'm thinking in my head, since I did serve on this CAC for the planning, you know, this, what was that thing again? Not, not rezoning, the Plan 2040, thank you. But there are things that the county has passed, where we're talking about cluster zoning, and you've got roads inside these cluster zoning subdivisions that are private roads, they don't meet county standards, and here we are trying to address roads that are being, and improvements that are being made outside of these subdivisions or other buildings, and yet we allow developers to come in and create cluster zoning where they don't have to, they don't have to provide the same thing that they have to provide outside on a public road. Things like even the stormwater management facilities and those. So, in other words, so the administration wants to take some of this burden off the taxpayers, and yet when they put these private roads in the cluster zoning, they're creating more of a ta, of a burden on the homeowners, especially if you only have a, a small subdivision of 10 or 12 homes, and they have to do all the stormwater management, they have to take care of all of their, you know, road improvements or snow removal and all that kind of stuff. So it, it just doesn't ring true with me. The other thing is, you know, Ms. Pickard talked about the impact fees that developers already have to pay, where is that money going? I mean, we've already, we've already seen that nobody seems to be able to keep track of where all that money is, maybe we'll ask Mr. Svenson. And the other thing is, I was looking at traffic impact studies that are done when a developer has to put in a subdivision. Traffic impact studies only go from point A to maybe the closest traffic signal, and so you're just creating massive, huge traffics on the roadways already. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on Bill 7824? The public hearing on Bill number 7824 is now closed. Yes. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number 7824.
Bill number 7824, in ordinance concerning subdivision and development road design.
Okay. All right. Do I call a vote now? Okay, okay. Is there any other comment or discussion on Bill 7824? Administration? Okay. And now I go? All right. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill number 7824.
Mr. Volkey.
Nay.
Ms. Fiedler.
Nay.
Ms. Rodbien.
Nay.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Nay.
Mr. Smith.
Nay.
Ms. Pickard.
Nay.
And Ms. Hummer.
Nay.
Zero in the affirmative, seven in the negative, Bill 7824 has failed.
All right. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number 8624. Or is that the one we just did?
No, we're good.
Oh, sorry. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number 8724.
8624, Madam Chair.
Which one are we on? We are on 86. Okay, I'm sorry, I got off, off my chart there.
No problem. Bill number 8624, in ordinance concerning approval of cable franchises Star Power Communications LLC doing business as Astound Broadband Comcast of Maryland LLC and Verizon Maryland LLC.
This is an administration bill. Mr. Hunt.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table, I have John Walchco from the Office of Information Technology, and Laurie Blair Klosmeyer from the Office of Law. So Bill 8624 extends for one year the cable franchise agreements that the county has with Star Power Communications LLC doing business as Astound Broadband Comcast of Maryland LLC and Verizon LLC. So the county is a party to these cable franchise agreements that were entered into pursuant to Article 10 of the county code, which were effective December 1st, 2006, and had terms of 15 years expiring December 1st, 2021. Federal law and the code provide for the process for renewal of cable franchises, and that includes submission of proposals by the providers and negotiation of terms and conditions of the renewals between cable providers and the carriers. The Office of Information Technology has undertaken the process, however, it has not been completed for the expiration of the current agreements. This bill approves, approves the extensions of the current franchise agreements through the end of the year of 2026 to allow the county and the three providers to negotiate the newals, renewals of their respective agreements. We're happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think, sir, what was your name again? I'm sorry.
John Walchco, I'm the Cable TV and Broadband Administrator for Anarundel County.
Okay, it's good to meet you, I guess, in person. I think we communicated online via email in reference to the Severance Center, and how some of the seniors there were, I guess, a little disappointed that, that actually there was no cable to the TV displays that were there, and I think via the email, you had mentioned that once these contracts are renewed, that's one of the things that we were, the administration was potentially trying to propose going forward, is that, is that still the case?
Correct, that would be the renewal, that is not this bill.
That's not this bill, okay.
No, this bill is simply an extension of the current franchise agreements that were done in 2006.
And when is the renewal bill?
The, the renewal bill has not happened yet. This is to extend the current franchises to December of '26, giving us the next two years to obtain legal guidance and start drafting the new cable franchise agreements with the providers over the next two years, at which it will take that long to get it done.
Well, I'm planting the seed now, it is certainly my desire to have some of these public spaces.
There, there are, there are many addresses that have been added to our infrastructure throughout the county since 2006, and all of those addresses will be added to the, to the new franchise agreements to hopefully be able to still get comp.
Is, is there flexibility in those contracts where they, it's not a, a proceed, or you just get a license and that gives you the license to, so that you don't have to, you know, ask for these things during the renewal, which, how? for these things during the renewal, which, how, how long is a typical renewal process? Like, how long does, is a cycle, since 2006?
Since 2006. And it was 15 years expired in '21.
Wow, okay. So the current agreement expired in '21, and we've just been extending it since then?
Right. And this is the, this is the extension to extend it to '26. The, the process of the negotiations and the public hearings and everything that we would have to happen was coinciding with COVID. And the original request to extend these was put out as a letter to the providers stating that and asking for their cooperation to let us extend the contracts to '26.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Has the extension from '21 till now, and then the extension from now till '26, other than the points that Mr. Smith is making, caused negative impacts on county taxpayers, county residents?
No. The, the, the providers have continued to pay their franchise and PEG fees as they're supposed to, and they've continued to do all of their due diligence reporting as they should.
Do we anticipate in the subsequent agreement that the rates that the providers we're paying will go up?
No, we do not.
Okay. So we're not missing out on any revenue?
Correct.
Okay, interesting. Do we anticipate that in the new agreements that we'll see more services provided for county residences, county residents, excuse me, as a result of these new franchise agreements?
The franchise agreements, we can only regulate cable TV. So anything that they provide as far as broadband or telephone services or anything else that they would provide to the residents, we cannot regulate that. The FCC only allows us to regulate cable TV. And as a result of that, with these, the recurring revenues that we get from these providers has been decreasing over the years, as there's a lot of court cutters.
I'm one of them.
I'm one of them, too.
Yeah, all right.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
Are there any other questions? Do I have to make a motion? Oh, that's right. Okay, we will now open the public hearing on Bill number 8624. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
Did we have any individuals who signed up ahead of the meeting? All right, is there anyone in attendance who would wish to speak on Bill number 8624? Please come at the table and have a seat. State your name and address for the record. Remarks are limited to two minutes. Mr. Svensson?
Kurt Svensson, Arnold, Maryland. It should not take over five years to negotiate these agreements. A public explanation of the continuing delays should be provided, as well as an explanation for why the Office of Information Technology thinks they can get done in the next two years what they've been unable to do for the past four years. The county auditor's review of fiscal impact for this bill reads, "The administration's fiscal impact no indicates there's no fiscal impact. Anticipated, however, no information about the revenues and expenditures associated with cable franchises were provided, so are unable to assess the impact. It's highly unlikely the negotiation of new agreements will result in exactly the same fiscal impact to the county. Absent a public explanation, all one can do is wonder. On the one hand, it's likely that these newly negotiated agreements will yield significantly less favorable fiscal results for the county. Are we effectively delaying this inevitable result? Is this resulting in costs being passed on to cable consumers in the county? What's the estimated future fiscal impact, and how is that being prepared for? On the other hand, maybe these newly negotiated agreements will yield significantly more favorable fiscal results for the county. And if so, how much more net revenue has been forgone by this protracted negotiation? Given the lack of information provided to the county auditor, I'm no longer surprised how little is being shared with the public. This does not make me feel any better, though. I think our county's elected representatives should be asking these sorts of questions and informing their constituents. I'm pleased to hear that some were actually posed tonight, and I didn't hear much at the work session on that. But do you know how the existing franchise proceeds are being spent? See page 72 of the approved budget book and see Capital Projects C5375 and C5654. Look and ask.
Mr. Mahler?
Gary Mahler, Jessup. All I can say is, wow. You, Kurt, you hit it right on the nail on the head. I agree with everything you said, there was no need for me to come to the table. I think that the time that's been taken, where, I mean, for years to negotiate a contract. And I think the administrator needs to fight for better services, cable TV services, more options, better rates, give people some choices and flexibility in what they, what they sign up for. I just, I just, I couldn't believe what I was hearing. But I think Kurt, I agree with everything he said, and I think this thing needs to be expedited and get the job done now, not, not two years or even longer than that. That's all.
Thank you. So, is there any other discussion by the council? Now we go for one?
Hmm?
Now we go for a vote?
After I get to ask my questions.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thanks.
Mr. Volkey?
Excuse me, we need to close the public hearing first.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. So the public hearing on Bill number 8624 is now closed. Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, Mr. Svensson, thank you for those chapter and verse references. $9.3 million, looks like that's the revenue amount from page 72. And it looks like most of that's being spent on the CATV PEG Capital Project, which I think is what you were referencing. But it's not spending all of it, it's only spending about $600,000 a year on it. Is there more? Is there another project? What was the other one? We'll talk, okay, all right. With that said, I think I did ask some of your questions about whether there were forgone revenues or not. But can you just clarify, because there were good questions there, with respect to any future impact of a negotiated agreement, I'm assuming that those can't be quantified at this point because you haven't negotiated the agreement. Is that a fair understanding?
That is correct.
Okay, that's what I thought. With that, I have, which Mr. Svensson unfortunately does not have, and the public, I don't know that they have, but you gave us a detailed explanation of why this has actually not happened in time. Can you give that publicly so that everyone else can hear it? Because you gave us a nice four-page explanation of what's actually going on. So if you can put that on the record, I think that'd be helpful, that might alleviate some people's questions.
I mean, I, I don't know that the public wants to hear me read the four pages. I don't know that I want to hear me read four pages, but what I will say is, so the, the current, if I can pull out my notes here. So the, the current agreements did expire, I believe, in 20, late 2021, because of the COVID pandemic and having trouble, you know, having in-person meetings and negotiating the contracts that were extended for, I believe, five years via a letter? Correct? No? No, I'm stating it wrong. So that's why I need to pull up my notes.
Okay, so the, there were, there were personnel changes. There was, I have been working in this position for a year now. The, our OIT director has been working in his position since the beginning of this year. And, and the CIO was also change of position. All, all of those people were involved with what was going on before. And during my transition, it was explained to me that these had been done, and I discovered that they hadn't. And that's what's in that document there. And we are scrambling to bring things back in compliance and do our best to start negotiations as quickly as possible. We do have to get them back under this agreement with this extension so that we do have a basis that we can start the renegotiations.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just adding one thing. So the notes that you gave us, it looks like in January of 2020, OIT started thinking about this and saying, these are going to expire late in 2021, December of 2021. Because we were in the midst of, well, we weren't yet, but in March of 2020, two months later, when we were in the midst of the pandemic, that was when I think the county decided, we aren't going to take this up right now. And you looked at legislation, which came in front of us in 2021, that would extend from that point till now, which is how we got this temporary extension. And then what you've also added is context, is all the people who were here who did that, they're all gone now, and you're sort of scrambling to catch up and trying to fix this. All fair?
Correct.
Got it, all right. Hopefully that gives a little more public information so that people recognize what's happening and why it's happening.
Are there any other comments or discussion? All right. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill 8624.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodbien?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Picker?
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, Bill number 8624 has passed.
All right. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number 8724.
Bill number 8724, In Ordnance Concerning Current Expense Budget Supplementary Appropriations, Severn Grove Special Community Benefit District.
This is an administration bill. Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table, I have Chris Trumbauer from the Budget Office and Laurie Blair Klosmeyer from the Office of Law and, sorry, Billy Pen, nope, don't have him on my, my list here.
Okay. Okay, you'll, you'll be called in a moment.
But we did enjoy Ethan thinking they were Billy Penley.
Ethan's going, I forget their names. Who is this?
Yep. So, very briefly, this one should be easy. So this is for the Severn Grove Special Community Benefits District. They're seeking a supplemental, supplementary appropriation of funds in the amount of $24,010.33 of community-held fund balance in their SCBD account. The Severn Grove Improvement Association, which administers the SCBD funds, has requested the additional appropriation to complete renovations to their community-owned clubhouse, which includes renovation and repairs for a failing septic system. This, the transfer of this money, the reason they had it in their account was because they were working to get this done last year, and I believe the previous contractor backed out. So they have the funds to do it, they just need us to approve it. Happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Picker?
College.
Okay, any questions? All right. We will now open the public hearing on Bill number 8724. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
Okay, we will now call on individuals who signed up ahead of the meeting. I do not have the list in front of me. We didn't, how many ones signed in front of the meeting? So, however, if there was anyone who now wishes to speak on Bill 8724, please come forward. No? No? There we go. So, so if there's no one to speak, the public hearing on Bill number 8724 is now closed. So I will say that I am for anything that is going to fix a failing septic system. I think that that is very important, and so glad to hear that that's what some of these funds are going toward. So, Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number 8724.
Bill number 8724, In Ordnance Concerning Current Expense Budget Supplementary Appropriations, Severn Grove Special Community Benefit District.
All right. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill number 8724.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodbien?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Picker?
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, Bill number 8724 has passed.
So, all right. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number 8924.
Bill number 8924, In Ordnance Concerning Current Expense Budget Board of Education Supplementary Appropriation.
Mr. Hunt, this is administration bill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table, I have Matt Stansky from Anandale County Public Schools and Laurie Blair Klosmeyer from the Office of Law. And I know our budget officer is still here to answer any questions if we need him. So this bill is for the Board of Education, which has requested a supplementary appropriation of unrestricted, unappropriated fund balances in the amount of $15,613. They are being appropriated to various major categories in the board's budget. The categories and amounts are enumerated in the bill, I can run over them if you'd like. Board has indicated that the funds will be used for enterprise resource planning software upgrade, Chromebook repairs, HVAC preventative maintenance, implementation of a learning management system, implementation of transportation routing software, a blueprint mandated carryover of unspent career counseling funds, cloud migration of a student information system, materials and transportation for robotics teams and clubs, and support for breakfast and lunch programs not located at a school. We are happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? Ms. Rodbien?
Thank you. I just want to disclose for the public and for the record that I'm an employee part-time of Anandale County Public Schools, but I do not believe I will be impacted personally by this bill, except for possibly the improved efficiency that will come with some of those software upgrades.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just, looking at the auditor's report, it was mentioned that the fiscal note used a total that was $75,000 more than what the bill authorized. And I was just looking for explanation, clarification about that.
Good evening, for the record, Matt Stansky, Chief Financial Officer. So there is within the bill a transfer of $75,000 within the Educational Options Program. We run a few programs outside of a school district building. And we had been continuing to provide lunch for, for those students. A recent federal audit informed us that if a student is not in a physical AACPS building with a building ID, that we, that the federal government would not pay for breakfast and lunch. And so this bill transfers contracted services from the Educational Options Budget into the Food Service Fund to continue to provide breakfast and lunch for those students.
Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just briefly, any, anything left in the unrestricted fund line, fund balance line?
Yeah, it'll be roughly $7 million remaining after this bill.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right. We will now open the public hearing on Bill number 8924. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
Yes, Madam Chair, we received one piece, which, one piece which has been shared with the council, added to the record and posted to the website.
Okay. Did we have any individuals who signed up ahead of the meeting? No. All right, is there anyone who now wishes to speak on Bill number 8924? Mr. Svensson?
Good evening. Kurt Svensson, Arnold, Maryland. Much is made about the distinction between one-time versus recurring, recurring sources and uses of funds. The consensus is that the matching principle should be applied, and especially to avoid using one-time funding sources to pay for recurring costs. So in this respect, the BOE representative was right when he emphasized the importance of that during the council work session. But that really only scratches the surface. The type of one-time use matters as well. All too often, these one-time uses are not subjected to as rigorous a review, and they often relate to one-time components of new initiatives that end up putting more strain on the recurring side of the budget. In other cases, it's a gray area if such costs are truly one-time in nature to begin with. The county itself and the public school system have some large and significant budgetary holes that one-time funding sources like this should be directed to first and foremost. To name the top candidates, why not make a recurring practice of making one-time contributions to the OPEB Trust Fund? Why not make a recurring practice of making one-time contributions to the Capital Projects Fund? This used to be a regular thing. It was called BOE PEGO, and it was an explicit funding source for many BOE capital projects over the years. At a minimum, this list of one-time spending items ought to be subject to the more comprehensive review associated with the annual budget process. What's the rush? What's the rush? Some of these items represent another run at it after failing to get funded in the proposed then approved budget. Others are new entries altogether. These do not constitute true emergencies, more like starter funding to get a new initiative dug in, so to speak. There's an old phrase used to characterize this sort of thing by old budgeters like me. It's called getting the camel's nose under the tent. Google it. Thank you.
All right. Are there any other, anyone else to speak? All right. The public hearing on Bill 8924 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number 8924.
Bill number 8924, in ordinance concerning current expense budget Board of Education supplementary appropriation.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill.
Madam Chair.
Oh, yes.
Sorry. Thanks. This is not an emergency bill, is it? I don't think so. All right. I'm just checking. My next question, so just again, following up, Mr. Svensson always raises these interesting issues for us, and he watches the work sessions where he sees us ask a lot of these questions. But we didn't ask all of them. So, is there anything in this bill that you have already, are there any appropriations in this bill where you've already spent the money?
No.
Okay. And then, with that being said, so because you haven't spent any of this money yet, are any of these appropriations going to, as he's put it, bring the camel's nose into the tent, that's then going to create some sort of new program or new initiative that's going to have to be funded recurring, even though this is with one-time money? Do you anticipate any of these being ongoing expenses? And if not, why?
No. So, I think, Mr. Volkey, it's a good question, and we talked a little bit about this during the work session, which is, so if you look at something like the learning management system, right? So, we know that this is going to be an ongoing initiative, that districts now, in the 21st century, need a IT system that holds all the curriculum documents. We had to move to that pretty quickly during the pandemic, so we used Essar funds. We are now, there's obviously now two components to this as we get to a new system. One is the one-time startup cost to implement the software, which is what we're asking for today. And then, there will be an ongoing operating cost associated with that, which you'll see more than likely in a fiscal '26 budget request. So, I think there's some of those in that category. Some of these are just truly one-time in nature. Our finance system upgrade, we already have in the budget money to pay for the ongoing license agreements for that, but this is just strictly to upgrade the cost. So, I would consider that one-time in nature. Some of these are new initiatives, the middle school athletics component, which we did ask this council money for to, for the recurring portion of that. This is really the one-time startup to get the equipment going for spring sports.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you. And I believe we did give you the funding for the middle school.
You did, absolutely.
Okay. Was there anything in this request that's here in this bill in front of us that you requested in the budget in FY '25 that was not funded in the FY '25 budget?
So, the, I would say, the $2 million preventative maintenance, right? Again, that was an Essar initiative to provide more preventative maintenance to our HVAC equipment. And so, again, we're looking at this as it's contracted services. It's one, again, like, it's one time to help us get through this year, and we'll determine whether or not we'll ask for it from this council again or not for next year.
Okay. So, the only thing we're talking about is number six, maintenance of plant, $2 million. That's the HVAC that you asked.
And I would also, I would also say, although not directly, the robotics initiatives as well.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any further questions? All right. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill 8924.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radbien.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill number 8924 has passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number 9024.
Bill number 9024, in ordinance concerning capital budget and program, roads and bridges, traffic control, Board of Education, and recreation and parks capital projects supplementary or transfer of appropriations.
All right. Administration, this is your bill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration with me at the table. I have Bill Heiser and Jeff Hagan from Anne Rundell County Public Schools, Chris Trumbauer, our Budget Officer, and Lori Blair Klosmeyer from the Office of Law. Bill 9024 transfers appropriations within certain recreation and parks and road and bridges capital projects, also makes supplementary appropriations of funds to specific capital projects within the traffic control and Board of Education project classes. This request is, is the result of an increase in the state's grant funding being higher than those estimated in the FY 2025 capital budget and program, and we are happy to answer any questions.
Do you have any questions? I have a question. The geothermal projects that are in the school, and we got information that there was some, some tax credits that would be coming for Rippling Woods, and there was listing for the current schools, the new schools that are being built, which will also be geothermal. I know, for instance, Severna Park also has geothermal. Were we able to qualify for tax credits for that back then, or is that past the, we were outside of the window? Okay. Just checking, but I love seeing geothermal for different projects. That's great. So, are there any other questions? So... Yes, Mr. Smith.
Just briefly, the security upgrades, what was that specifically? Just for, for the record.
It can range, Mr. Smith, from, from lighting to exterior, interior lighting as well, security vestibules could include, we don't get too specific publicly in terms of what we're needing security, but it helps upgrade all of our schools to make sure that they're safe.
Understood. Also, when it comes to the ARTIC, Real-Time Information Center, that we've all been visiting, are you all partnering with the Anne Rundell County Police, at least for out-of-school hours, just some of those, the, the public spaces on the ground, not during school hours, that, are you partnering with them with that facility?
We are in partnership, and our Chief, Chief of Systemic Operations handles that.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We will now open the public hearing on Bill 9024. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not, and nobody else signed up ahead of time either.
You got it. So, is there anyone here who now wishes to speak on Bill 9024? Mr. Svensson, come on down.
Kurt Svensson, Arnold, Maryland. Given my limited time, I'm going to focus on just one of these capital projects, the Building Systems Renovations Project. The county auditor's review of fiscal impact for this bill reads, "The IAC award of $7.1 million for this project will require a county match of $5.9 million." The administration's fiscal note indicates this will be requested in the fiscal year '26 capital budget. This grant award and required matching funds will total approximately $13 million. No details were provided on how this funding would be used. Requesting the match in the '26 capital budget, that's what I call kicking the can down the road. More alarming, though, is the fact that this recurring multi-year project has a significant unencumbered balance of prior approved appropriation authority. An unencumbered balance that exceeds two times the average annual appropriation is an indicator, a red flag, if you will, that a substantial amount of one-time sub-project cost savings had been accumulating over time. A review of the 2025 Approved Capital Budget Book reveals an unencumbered balance of $146 million as of April 1, 2024. This project is in serious need of a prior approved balance reconciliation. A recurring multi-year project like this should never have an unencumbered balance exceeding 10 times the average annual program amount of $12.5 million. This looks like what a former county executive used to call a cookie jar, where money was stashed for when we needed to come up with some for a pet project. I used to do battle with a county auditor that would have been all over this. Thank you.
Ms. Johnson.
Julia Johnson, PO Box 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. Of course, you know I'm not up to speed, but I'm looking at this, and I see in ordinance concerning capital budget and program, roads and bridges, traffic control, and I'm thinking, well, have you all read that little 40-page thing I sent to almost all of you about the feasibility study of working with, she, oh, a, you take Ridgely Avenue from where the two churches are, that is, North Best Gate on one side and Wilson Road on the other side, at the intersection, then you go due south, all the way down to Graus and Taylor Avenue. Well, you may or may not recall that during Region 7, you know, we weren't talking about going all the way down to, you know, to Taylor Avenue, but, you know, oh, and in that 40-page booklet, their estimated number was 2 million or $2.68 million to do a sidewalk on one side of Ridgely Avenue. Because apparently, we're not good enough to get both sides. I don't know. And they're also putting that sidewalk on the side where they're already these homes, which seems kind of peculiar, because don't the homeowners or the property owners have duties to put in their sidewalks, you know, and their driveways and parkings? And it's not in here, but the date on that document was June of 2022. And off this up, I searched and tried really, really hard to find, well, who said that we can do this? And nobody had one. And I'm not allowed to disclose my secret source of obtaining a copy, but I did share them with you. Is, you know, is that stuff going to be slipped in here for 2.68 million?
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Oh, you can't answer me?
It's kind, no, it's not back and forth, but we have, but thank you for your testimony.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. The public hearing on Bill number 9024 is now closed. Are there any other comments or questions? All right. Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. What happens to the grant funding from the state if the county doesn't match it in the FY '26 budget? Does it revert back to the state?
Yes, it does revert back.
Thank you.
If I might, Councilmember, Chris Trumbauer, Budget Officer, the county has a pretty aggressive strategy of maximizing the state funding that we can get through the IAC, and we have a pretty good track record of working with our partners at the board to do that. So, we do try and leverage as much of that IAC money as possible to come to this county. If we don't use it, there's 23 other counties that would love to put it to work for their CIP, so.
Any further questions? Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number 9024.
Bill number 9024, in ordinance concerning capital budget and program, roads and bridges, traffic control, Board of Education, and recreation and parks capital projects supplementary and transfer of appropriations.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill number 9024.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radbien.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill number 9024 has passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number 9124.
Bill number 9124, in ordinance concerning zoning requirements for conditional uses home occupations.
Ms. Fiedler, this is your bill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This bill's pretty straightforward. We discussed it during the work session, removes the square foot or greater language on a lot for the home occupation of a pet care business. I do have an amendment that I will offer at the appropriate time.
Okay. Administration, or do you make a motion? Administration, do you have any comments on this? Getting it?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration with me. I have Lynn Miller and Kelly Kenny. We're happy to answer any questions. If not, we'll proceed to the public hearing.
We will now open the public hearing on Bill number 9124. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, and nobody signed up ahead of time.
Thank you. Is there anyone here who now wishes to speak on Bill 9124? Okay, seeing no one. No, wait. Johnson's coming up.
PO Box 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. This bill, of course, deals with conditional uses in home, particularly home occupations. And during the zoning process, we were struggling with what's the distinction between, you know, home occupations and small businesses? And, you know, it seems to me that there is a lack of clarification, and I realize I'm old, and I, you know, I'm easily confused, and all that kind of stuff, but I do work at it more than the average Joe, and I do think it's important, because in dealing with this change in the zoning on Ridgely Avenue, you know, you have people who have been calling themselves small businesses without anybody knowing it, because there were no signs that said, "We are a small business." We interpret it as, oh, it's another home occupation. You know, nothing special. We don't have to be afraid that the next thing we know, we're going to have somebody come in at 28 parking, parking spaces. And it seems to me, from what you were talking about, or that earlier bill, when you're talking about the traffic burden, you know, 28 cars means you're going to have one coming and one, you know, you're going to have 28 coming and 28 going. 28 and 28 is 56. Does that get you over the 50, you know, vehicle thing? I mean, there's a lot of stuff that's just super confusing, and I do wish that you would reconsider this small business thing, because, you know, if, and, you know, keep it owner-occupied, because, as you know, there are a lot of people who like Ridgely Avenue. God knows, I've been there almost 50 years, and so have other folks. You know, it just don't go away. Anyway, thank you for letting me, you know, raise the question.
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 1.
We're going to close the public hearing first, if you don't mind.
Oh, yes. The public hearing on Bill number 9124 is now closed. Now, Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 1.
Amendment Number 1, this amendment requires a minimum lot size of 6,000 square feet for a pet care business operating as a home occupation.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I believe it was Ms. Hummer during our last discussion on removing entirely the square footage minimum for this home care business, and the specific example given was townhome communities, and I agreed that we should have some kind of minimum square footage for a lot. So, I went through completely an anecdotal exercise of going into each district and pulling up addresses for townhome communities, and then going into ESTAT and looking at their square footage. My husband thought I was crazy. But most of the older townhome communities, the square footage for a lot is 2,000. Some of the newer ones are 1,800, 1,900, so just under. There's not a whole lot higher than that. So, I even added additional square footage to it to give it a little buffer, landing at 6,000 square feet. So, with that motion to adopt.
Is any discussion, the amendment, the administration?
We support this amendment.
Okay. If there's no further discussion, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 1.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radbien.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 1 has been adopted.
Okay. Bill number 9124 will be heard on...
One that really did touch my, I think it pulled on my heartstrings, senior citizens in particular, unable to go to the store themselves using grocery delivery services. They don't have the option to choose to bring their own bag. And the consequence of not having the choice is that they are automatically charged 10 cents. The goal, my intent behind this, is to bring some freedom to the marketplace, to allow the consumers to have the choices. Some businesses may still choose to charge for paper bags. That's their business decision. Some may not. That's their business decision. But from there, the consumer then can then make an educated choice on what retail establishments they may or may not wish to shop at, depending upon their own personal circumstances. I do have an amendment, a technical amendment, at the appropriate time to fix a typo. And, yeah, thank you.
Administration?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. I have Eric Michelson from DPWR, Environmental Policy Director here, as well as Holly Velez from Inspections and Permits, and Kelly Kenny from the Office of Law. I know we discussed this at the work session, but the administration is opposed to this. We believe this is an important part of the overall regulatory scheme of the plastic bag ban. I'll turn it over to Eric if he wants to add anything additional.
Eric Michelson, Environmental Policy Advisor. I think the only thing that I would mention here is that at the last meeting, there was some conversation about, well, this has changed behavior in terms of people bringing reusable bags based on the Sierra Club study, which is great. But I think, again, that's a function of the incentives that are in place. So if the 10-cent fee is to be reduced, I think we can pretty obviously expect people to go back to at least some level of paper bag use, which is not completely environmentally benign, you know, proper practice either. So that's all I'll say.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the challenge that I have with so much of this bill is the sort of lack of understanding of what's actually happening. So number one, this doesn't change anything with respect to your ability to get a plastic bag. You still can't get one. Number two, if we take away the fee, that doesn't mean a retailer can't choose to charge the fee. We're going to hear, I think, from the Maryland Retailers Alliance at some point, and they're going to talk about why we did this. I remember. I was there. I remember this bill. We talked about it a lot. But any retailer still is free in a free market to say, "I want to charge 10 cents because that's the cost." Or, "I think it's good policy to continue to charge 10 cents just because it creates a barrier for folks." But by getting rid of that, it also allows another retailer to say, "I don't want to charge that 10 cents because I see that as potentially a competitive advantage to be able to offer these paper bags, paper bags for free, or reusable bags more frequently than what this bill allows." So I guess, I just want to make sure I'm clear on that because there's nothing in this that would say you cannot charge for a paper bag. You could charge for a paper bag, you could charge 30 cents right now if you wanted to. You're not mandated to charge anything more than 10. You are mandated to charge at least 10. But you can go above that if you want. You just can't go below it. If we repeal that, a retailer could still say, "I want to charge a 10-cent fee because that's what my cost is, and I'm going to pass that on to my consumers." And I think that there are plenty of people, at least we've gotten testimony from them, who talk about how this is not a burden and it's not a big deal. So it sounds like those people are going to continue to choose to say, "I'm going to go to those retailers where they're choosing to charge me that 10 cents." So I just want to be clear about that because I think that piece of it gets lost in a lot of the messaging and a lot of what people are saying about this bill. There's this sense that, like, you won't be allowed to charge for paper bags. You will. You can still charge for them. That's a choice. You can still charge for reusable bags. You could also give them away for free. But that's going to be up to the retailer. So again, we're taking these regulatory sort of strictures off of this, and we're saying to the market, "You all decide how you want to do this." We have changed behavior. There was something that the Sierra Club sent in testimony, or I think it was the City of Laurel, who did not implement a paper bag fee. And they saw, I think it was something like 49, or it was high 40s numbers, of folks who were bringing their own bags versus, like, Anarundel and one other jurisdiction, might have been Hyattsville. It was closer to in the 60s or something like that, 65, 66%, something like that. Either way, you shake that, that's still a significant change in behavior, whether there's a fee or not. So while I can understand their argument that it's maybe more advantageous to do it one way than the other, and that's what they're arguing, no one can argue that it hasn't changed behavior by simply saying, "You can't get plastic bags anymore." So I'm just putting that out there because I think that's important. No one is, if you can't get plastic bags, you obviously can't get them anywhere you go. And by charging the fee, you're certainly creating a barrier, just to make sure I'm clear on this. But you also, if you don't charge for it, there are plenty of people who are still choosing to bring their own bag. Not everybody is using paper bags. That's what the City of Laurel piece shows. So to say, "Everybody's going to go back and use just paper bags," that's false. That's not what the data shows. Even the Sierra Club acknowledges that.
Eric Michelson, Environmental Policy Officer. I'm not saying everybody's going to go back to using paper bags, but do you disagree that there will likely be an increase in paper bag usage with the reduction of the fee, or the dropping of the fee?
I obviously can't predict everyone's behavior, but I think a lot of people over the last year plus have gotten used to carrying reusable bags in their car, taking them in with them to the supermarket or to Target or wherever. So that behavior has become a behavior that's been modified. So now what you're doing is, you're not incentivizing people to not take the bag, you're simply saying, "We're not going to have a charge for that." If a retailer says, "Well, we were making the 10 cents before, and we want to keep doing it," nothing in this legislation stops that. They can keep doing that. So I don't know that, once you change people's behavior, if you take away the effectively charge for that bag, I don't know that everybody's going to automatically go, "Oh, well, I'm just getting paper now." No, they're used to taking the reusable bag, so they'll keep doing it.
Ms. Pickard.
So on the same vein, just to play devil's advocate with my colleague to my right again, we also, just recently, in the last couple of years, imposed a citation fee when you blow by a school bus. So maybe people have changed their behavior and they've noticed how not to blow by a school bus, and we don't need to charge those, that fee anymore. I mean, is that the same, the same rationale?
Do you want to try?
No, I do not.
I was going to say, you want me to put that bill in?
No. I think we, when this bill passed, we looked at legislation and policies across the country, and this was definitely the one that, the policy that landed where we want it. We wanted to change behavior. And six, six of my colleagues, six of us, voted with Ms. Rodbien on her hard work to bring this policy to bear. And I don't know that we've had it in place long enough to reevaluate it this time. I'm a no on this bill tonight, but for all the reasons that both Mr. Michelson and I'm sure my colleague, Ms. Rodbien, is going to discuss.
Ms. Rodbien.
Thank you. I'll have more to say, but I want to hear the public testimony first. I think one thing that we're not really considering right now is, bags are never free. It's just a matter of how you pay for them. So if you pay for them at the cash register, you pay 10 cents. If a store is not charging you at the cash register, they're charging you somewhere else. They're charging you in their overhead, which is rolled into their costs. So let's be clear that bags are never free. However, if we now have a large group or a large portion of our county residents who are not using bags and therefore not, you know, costing the store the 10 cents or whatever their actual cost is, we now have created a situation where those who are using, if we were to take away the 10-cent fee, we have created a situation where those who continue to use the paper bags are, I'm sorry, those who are not using the paper bags are subsidizing those who are using the paper bags. So I don't know about everyone else, but if I were in the grocery store checkout line and I did not have a carton of milk, but someone behind me wanted to pay for a carton of milk, I would not feel very pleased about having to pay for part of their carton of milk. I think we can say the same thing here about, about the bags. If I'm bringing my own reusable bag, I'm not really okay with paying for someone else's reusable bag. So I think we need to look at it in that regard, too. But like I said, I really want to hear the public testimony because I know we've gotten a lot over, you know, the testimony tool, the online testimony tool and email. So I look forward to hearing that.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. While not the lead sponsor, the main reason that I did jump on as co-sponsor is the example of a resident who does not have an option because they cannot go out and purchase their groceries or whatever retail items. They just automatically fall under the charge because they can't pick or bring their own bag. And I think when we're talking about comparing someone who drives by the school, a school bus without stopping, to someone who cannot leave their home easily and does not have the option of bringing a bag, a little bit apples and oranges there. Completely understand that we pass a lot of legislation to try to create a safe environment for drivers and students. But this, for me, really goes back to those that don't have the choice to bring a reusable bag.
Ms. Rodbien.
Thank you. I would just like to say to the co-sponsors, if that were the bill that we were looking at tonight, if we were looking at saying, "We'll take away the 10-cent fee for those who are unable to go to the grocery store and are, you know, have no other option than to use delivery, we were taking away their 10-cent fee," I think we might have a much more reasonable conversation. But this bill goes way beyond that. And so I don't think we can, you know, say, "We're going to take away the 10-cent fee for everyone," simply because we have some folks that may have a very good argument for not paying that 10-cent fee. If that were the bill before us, I think we could have a real conversation. But this really does undermine, and we have a lot of statistics to show it, which I'll talk about after the public hearing.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Certainly agree. I want to hear from the public, but I guess I want to make sure I understand what I'm hearing. Because I saw this in some of the testimony from one of the Annapolis City Council, or Aldermanic folks. Same concept is what you just said. So if we were to amend this bill to have it only exempt delivery services of groceries and other items, is that something that there is more of a consensus from the body that we could go with? Because if that's the case, then it may be appropriate, after hearing public testimony, to try to hold this bill, to bring in such an amendment, and look at that as a potential compromise solution to address the main concerns and deal with the issues. So I just want to make sure I'm understanding the temperature of the room correctly before going down that path.
I will say that I would certainly entertain that, that for the home delivery, because the people who do the home delivery do not have a choice in the matter. So that is something that I would be open to discussing.
Okay.
Well, I mean, we could, if this were such an issue for retailers, I mean, they could, I don't know what they could do, but for delivery, I don't know. Okay, all right, all right.
Ms. Rodbien.
I was going to say, I would be willing to consider that, but I would rather just see that in a separate bill.
Discussions, we will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 9224. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
Yes, Madam Chair. We received 30 pieces, which have been shared with the council, added to the record and posted to the website. And we have about eight people that signed up ahead of time to speak.
So we will now call on individuals who signed up ahead of the meeting. When I call your name, please come up to the table and have a seat. When it's your turn, state your name and address for the record. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. Please listen for the buzzer and respect the two-minute time limit as others are signed up to speak. If you have more than two minutes to share, I'm going to ask you to submit your additional thoughts using our online testimony tool. So the first, how many chairs do we have up there? Six. Ann Pearson, Sarah Price, Joanne Roller, Bernie Robinson, Thomas Woodward, and Melanie Dunaway. All right. Ms. Pearson?
Turn this on?
Yeah, you're good. There you go.
Ann Pearson, 2041 Shore Drive, Edgewater, 21037. I beg you not to eliminate the 10-cent charge. If you look at the experience the City of Laurel had when they had no fee on paper bags, 60% of the customers used them. When they had a fee installed, it reduced the use of paper bags by 30%. So it's very effective in reducing the cost to trees. What people don't think about when they use a paper bag at a grocery store is that it's made out of trees. It's our forests that we need to protect. The forests sequester carbon. They, they filter stormwater. They clean and clear the air we breathe and, and have a significant effect in reducing temperature, heat. We also have a cost to the environment from trucks that take the logs to the paper mills and in, in air pollution increase. And, and the paper mills themselves create water pollution. There are very significant effects in using paper, in all the things we use paper for. We should stop and think. But people don't do that. It's also, forests are also very, very critical habitat for migrating songbirds that are, whose populations are severely reused. So we need to live with the environment in a way that, that allows us and other species to survive well. We're not doing that. We're not thinking that way. Nobody's educating the public sufficiently to cause them to stop. So I beg you, even for those people who live at home, 10 cents is not very much to pay for the, for the damage that using paper bags is causing. We need to reduce even more than the 25, 27% that we use now.
Thank you, Ms. Pearson. Ms. Price.
Thank you. I'm Sarah Price here on behalf of the Maryland Retailers Alliance. We are located at 171 Conduit Street here in Annapolis, and I am a resident of District Three. We were supportive of the Bring Your Own Bag law when it passed, as it passed, because the 10-cent fee is very meaningful for retailers. Having that fee set in place as a mandate, as part of the law, it reduces competition between businesses, it covers the cost of the mandated transition, and it establishes consistent expectations for all customers in all retail settings throughout the county. That is particularly meaningful now that the City of Annapolis has passed its own matching legislation. So if this were to pass, we would now be flipping the island that Annapolis was before they passed their own matching law. I conducted a survey with our members over the summer to see what they are now paying for paper bags. When we first started working on this type of legislation back in 2019, paper bags were six to eight cents each for the largest grocers. And now the largest grocery chains in Maryland are consistently paying about 10 to 12 cents per paper bag. So having that 10-cent fee in place is appropriate. It covers the cost of the bags, and it makes sure that that cost is not passed off through everything else that you're paying on top of every other inflated price that we're seeing right now. So we would ask that you please reject this proposal and maintain the law as it passed. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Zoller.
I do know how to roll pie crust, but my name is Zoller. Thank you. Joanne Zoller, Glenberne. Once upon a time, the citizens of Anavonale County
I'm Sarah Price here on behalf of the Maryland Retailers Alliance. We are located at 171 Conduit Street here in Annapolis, and I am a resident of District 3. We were supportive of the Bring Your Own Bag Law when it passed, as it passed, because the 10 cent fee is very meaningful for retailers. Having that fee set in place as a mandate, as part of the law, it reduces competition between businesses, it covers the cost of the mandated transition, and it establishes consistent expectations for all customers in all retail settings throughout the county. That is particularly meaningful now that the City of Annapolis has passed its own matching legislation. So, if this were to pass, we would now be flipping the island that Annapolis was before they passed their own matching law. I conducted a survey with our members over the summer to see what they are now paying for paper bags. When we first started working on this type of legislation back in 2019, paper bags were six to eight cents each for the largest grocers. And now, the largest grocery chains in Maryland are consistently paying about 10 to 12 cents per paper bag. So, having that 10 cent fee in place is appropriate. It covers the cost of the bags, and it makes sure that that cost is not passed off through everything else that you're paying on top of every other inflated price that we're seeing right now. So, we would ask that you please reject this proposal and maintain the law as it passed. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Zoller.
I do know how to roll pie crust, but my name is Zoller. Thank you. Joanne Zoller, Glenberne. Once upon a time, the citizens of Anaronda County asked their leaders to do away with plastic carryout bags that stores were handing out right and left. The plastic bags clogged up recycling operations, blew away into trees and streams and rivers, and worst of all, never decomposed. They just broke down into little bits until eventually doctors found that people had microplastics in their bodies. The strange thing, though, is that even though everyone was very annoyed by the plastic bags, everyone was taking them at the stores anyway. Why? Because they were free. So, the leaders decide, yes, let's do away with plastic shopping bags. And voila, the plastic bags disappeared from the stores. Problem solved. 72% of shoppers brought usable, reusable shopping bags or used no bags at all. Only 28% of the shoppers paid for paper bags, which were available at stores for a small 10 cent fee to discourage single-use waste of a natural resource. Then, some of the leaders proposed, hey, why not make the paper bags free? Why should we have to pay for paper bags? They highlighted the case of seniors who have their groceries delivered and had, and thought that 10 cents a bag was a hardship for these citizens. So, the county made the paper bags free for everyone, and everyone began to take paper bags because they were free. They stopped bringing reusable bags because it was a lot easier just to take the free paper bags. However, the forests weren't happy because thousands more trees had to be cut down to make paper bags. The wind was not happy because trucks were making the air dirty. And finally, the people went back to the leaders and said, we made a mistake. Let's change back. Moral of the story, be sure to consider the health of the environment in every decision you make. Please vote down Bill 9224.
Thank you, Ms. Zoller. Mr. Robinson.
Bernie Robinson, Glenberne. As Chairman of the Anaronda Group of Sierra Club, I speak on behalf of thousands of members and supporters. Please oppose Bill Number 9224, which would essentially gut the effectiveness of the proven, successful bag bill as, Bring Your Own Bag Bill as it stands. If it ain't broke, don't mess with it. I'm going to quote Alderman Rob Savage, Chair of the Annapolis City Council Environmental Matters Committee, in a section that he submitted written testimony, quote, "While I'm glad the sponsors have acknowledged that behavior is starting to change, they present insufficient, insufficient justification for changing it. Their first assertion is that behavior has changed, so the fee is no longer needed, yet they have not provided any data that supports their assumption that behavior change would continue without the fee. To the contrary, the Sierra Club and other jurisdictions have information indicating that the fees is what changes behavior. To say that the behavior change would continue without the fee denies logic," unquote. This would be a big mistake since removing the fee would incentivize shoppers to rely heavily on paper bags rather than just, than use reusable bags or no bag, as most shoppers are now doing. Paper bags carry an environmental cost since trees must be harvested, loss of carbon sequestration, and stormwater filtering. Wood must be hauled to the paper mills, air pollution from the trucks, and paper processed, the horrible water pollution from paper mill plants. I've seen that personally. It's disgusting. Shoppers have already changed their shopping practices in environmentally friendly way. Removing the paper bag fee would reverse the major successes of the Bring Your Own Bag Bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Mr. Woodward.
My name is Tom Woodward. I'm a resident of Arnold. I live on Forest Drive in Arnold. I'm speaking in favor of the proposed legislation, in particular repealing of the provisions related to merchants' provision and the use of paper bags. As a general rule in the U.S. economy, we rely on a price system to signal to businesses and consumers how to efficiently allocate and conserve resources. To the extent that product prices and body total costs associated with the production and use, we try to avoid second guessing the choices made by market participants. Overriding those choices generally requires compelling reasons, believing that the pricing mechanism is failing to account for significant costs. So, for example, the banning of plastic bags is a legitimate argument that could be made. The public's careless disposal of them and a costly blight on the landscape, danger to wildlife, a ban or a tax on plastic bags is going to be justified as a legitimate rationale for the government correction of a shortcoming in market incentives. Moreover, those costs to society tend to be localized and therefore fall into the province of local jurisdictions. But note that the arguments concerning waste of natural resources do not constitute a rationale. Those resource values are already incorporated in the price of the product. So, only the environmental cost, specifically local environmental costs, which is the province of local government. The success or failure of the ban is not measured in the increased use of reusable bags. The proper metric is the decreased litter of discarded plastic bags. There is little justification for the restrictions on paper bags. Simply substitutes the judgment of a few elected officials for that of individual consumers. It is overbearing, it is intrusive, and it is arrogant.
Thank you, Ms. Woodward. Ms. Dunaway.
Good afternoon, or good evening, good night. My name's Melanie Dunaway, and I live in Annapolis, and I'm here in support of this bill. I had a lot of facts and figures that I wanted to dazzle you all with, but I think what's more important, looking at who I'm sitting with here, is let's talk about the people that this is affecting. And the people that this is affecting mostly can't be here because they're Uber drivers, they're waitresses, they're working, and they can't afford to take off to come to this. It's also affecting people who are on fixed incomes, who live paycheck to paycheck, who are on disability benefit payments. These people can't afford it. Yeah, okay, look at us all here. We can, we're all doing well. Y'all have a paycheck from the county. We're all paying the bills, and everybody here doesn't look like they're hurting. But those people are hurting. This is a regressive tax on the poorest and the most economically vulnerable in our society. So, I beg you, stop making these people pay the price for other people's irresponsibility. There's not, they're, they're using, we're all using reusable bags. That's great. But when they forget them, when they have to have things delivered, when they're in a wheelchair and they're trying to manage a paper bag. Talked to a lady at Giant the other day. She lives in the senior apartments next door, over on, on Reva Road. She had eggs and strawberries strewn all over the ground because she forgot her bags. She couldn't, she didn't want to pay the 10 cents, so she was trying to carry the stuff out in her wheelchair. It's terrible, and it needs to stop. This is death by a thousand cuts. We all say, everybody can afford 10 cents, but it's not just the 10 cents. It's that gas is more expensive. It's that health insurance is more expensive. It's that rent is more expensive. Everything has gone up, and with the, with the county council imposing this tax on these people, you're hurting them. Show us that you care about the people in the county more than special interests. Get rid of this fee.
Thank you, Ms. Dunaway. Next group, James Warren Wills, Marjorie Winslow, and Giovanni Diamici. If there's anyone else who did not sign up ahead of time who would like to come speak, please come up now.
My name is Jim Wills. I live on Coachway in Annapolis, and I'm, I'm going to go in a little bit of a contradictory direction here in a minute. Looking at testimony from the county council minutes when this was passed, the goal of the bill is to limit the amount of plastic in county waterways that threaten wildlife and been broken down into microplastics, wind up in humans' digestive systems. Nobody can fault that as a goal. That's the ecology and the, the waterways. I submit that another consideration outside of the scope of this bill, but just to get it on the record, is your county Department of Public Works, the sewer treatment plants, have discharged in 2023 350,000 gallons of raw sewage that might possibly have an impact on the waterways and the water life in them. The source for that is opendata.maryland.gov, and 2023 is the most recent, but that's a lot of raw sewage into the county waterways. I think it might have a little more impact than a plastic bag. In, Shannon Ledbetter said in the, in the minutes when this was passed, I don't know that a government mandate, a requirement, is the way, that is structured in this way is the right answer. That is, is prophetic. It may not be in the county's best interest to prohibit the use of paper bags by charging 10 cents for them because people look at an alternative as, to an alternative, as a woven poly, polystyrene bag.
Thank you, Mr. Wills. Ms. Winslow.
I'm Marjorie Winslow. I'm from Brownsville, and I want to thank you all, commend the council for pass, the passage of the plastic ban bill, and I just would hope that you don't undo your work by, by taking away this fee. I, I think one of the, I think Lisa Rodian had spoken to, you know, this amendment, and I think that might be a possible way to, to trim the bill and make it more suitable and palatable for others, but I, by, you know, protecting those people, you know, somehow making the disadvantaged people, people that come up in wheelchairs, that they wouldn't have to pay the fee. But if you, if you take away the, the fee across the board, it's, it is just so going to disincentivize people to, and people are just going to willy-nilly be asking for paper bags. And so, I'm really here to speak up for the trees, and, you know, I don't, don't want to see, you know, when I go out to pick up, when I'm out for a walk and I'm picking up trash, you know, I used to, there used to be a plastic bag within a foot of where I, or two of where I would be picking up trash, and I could level it up, but, and so, you have done such good work by, by eliminating the plastic bag, but really, you know, I hope you, you will, you will not pass this bill. And I also wanted to mention, too, that, that the delivery service industry, the delivery service providers, there are, there are models that are being developed where people that are, you know, getting their groceries delivered to their house, they are getting, Walmart is putting it upon, they've, they've got a pilot program where they're, they're, it's been in operation for about two years. So, they're, they're allowing, bringing in plastic bags or bags that can be re-washed and recycled. And so, as that industry matures, this delivery system matures, there can be ways to, to avoid the, having, you know, paper bags and, and anyway, so.
Thank you, Ms. Winslow. Mr. Diamici, I'm not saying it right, I know.
Close enough. Giovanni Diamici, I live in Crafton. I'm here to ask you to vote no on this bill, as is written, as I heard, might be modified because the, the home delivery industry is, has not been around forever. How did the people who were housebound 10, 20, 30 years ago manage to get their, their provisions? They did not call DoorDash. DoorDash was not there. They had other ways. To exempt blanketing exemption to the, the delivery industry means giving a windfall to those people, no names made, who can perfectly well go to the store but choose to have it delivered because they can afford the extra cost of the delivery. And now, you want to give them an extra incentive. Please don't do that. Thank you.
Please.
Dear members of the Anaronda County Council, good evening. My name is Mayor Malik, and I'm here today on behalf of the Anaronda County Youth Advisory Council. During this November meeting, the council voted anonymously against Bill 9224. The Anaronda County Youth Advisory Council is a coalition of diverse student advocates and leaders who serve as a voice for the youth in Anaronda County. According to various, various trusted sources, paper bag production relies heavily on natural, natural resources, notably wood pulp from trees. This reliance contributes to deforestation. Now, with additive factors of paper bags being biodegradable and compostable, paper bags are better for the environment in comparison with plastic bags, if done in moderation. Taking away the 10, 10 cent fee from paper bags causes the use of paper bags by consumers to increase, thus causing a domino effect of more production needed, which aids in more deforestation occurring. With the 10, 10 cent fee on paper bags, we see consumers using more of their own reusable bags at grocery, groceries and convenience stores, which in the long run contributes to our, to us being more environmentally conscious and leads to a decrease in harming our environment. As a person from a low-income household, I see how grocery prices affect my family and so much more. However, the 10 cent bag at the end of the checkout line does not contribute to the stress of increased grocery prices, but it does encourage my mother to use more of her reusable bags, which are better for the environment. As a youth in Anaronda County, we want our community to be environmentally conscious. As a youth, we, we see that this bill will cause more harm to the environment by overproducing paper bags to meet the demand from consumers in stores. And so, for all the reasons mentioned, the Anaronda County Youth Advisory Council is against Bill 9224. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Ma'am.
Which do I touch to speak? Oh, looks like it's on. Great. The existing bill works very well, as is, proven effective with evidence gathered from other jurisdictions who do not charge a paper bag fee in comparison with our success. Making paper bags free to consumers will punish retailers, as the retailer association represented stated. They will have to pay for bags they give away gratis. This alteration appears to me to be a way to make the bill less effective so that it can be eliminated at a later date. If this bill eliminating the bag fee is passed, those shoppers who choose to use recyclable bags or use none will end up paying the cost of these, quote, "free" bags, with the retailers raising costs on goods to cover them. And I note a redundancy in the bill is introduced, this new bill. It is written for removing the, quote, "requirement of retail establishments to provide free reusable carryout bags during certain dates." The bill currently in force says, quote, "Retailers may provide free reusable carryout bags for a nine-day period each year from April 22nd through April 30th, and during a promotional period established by the retail establishment, up to 10 days per month," unquote. So, if retailers want to give away reusable carryout bags for free, then they have the opportunity to do that 129 days a year. That's almost a third of the year with the unamended bill in force. Further, if fines for not following the minimal 10% charge on paper bags is removed, you remove the tiny teeth that are in this existing bill and are effective. You know the general public will go for what is cheap and easy, and those that use truly reusable bags like me will pay the price and subsidize them. And for seniors to drive to get their groceries, that would cost them far more in gas, upkeep, insurance, or cab fare than a 50 cent charge for a insurance, or cab fare than a 50-cent charge for a five-bag delivery, a huge delivery for a single senior or couple.
Thank you, ma'am.
One more sentence?
Okay.
If the paper bags used for delivery were free to the indigent and not to those who can easily afford the minor charge for conveniences' sake, you might have a possibility of getting that passed.
Ma'am, could you state your name and address?
Oh, I'm so sorry. I meant to, but I am Deirdre Suddeth, 465 Aventura Court, Glenberne, Maryland.
Great. Thank you so much. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Priscilla Pania, 853 Runaway, Annapolis. I won't repeat the information shared in person, both in person and by written testimony that you all have about the current bill. You have the science, you know the change is slow. Change takes at least two years. Bottom line, no one's changing any year, and most people haven't even figured it out completely this year. Over the past year, I've heard people complaining in the checkout lines that they forgot their bags. They're not complaining that they have to pay for bags, they're complaining that they forgot their bags. In my community, people are not complaining about the bags. The biggest concern I have is that you want to shift the burden back to the consumer who brings their own bag. You want me to pay for the bags used by others. The merchants don't eat the cost of profits, or the cost out of profits, they pass it on to the consumers. There are grocery stores around the country that have a program where they bring deliveries to people's homes in reusable containers. They bring them, the people take their groceries, they leave that container on the front porch, and the next delivery, they pick up the empty one and they leave a new one. And this is a very effective program. Nobody has to pay for bags, it doesn't cost anybody anything, and you're not creating waste. The other option is they could deliver in cardboard boxes, which are easily recycled. So there are options out there that could be used. I really hope you withdraw this bill. Just, I don't even want to see a vote on it. I want to see it withdrawn and go back and rethink, what's the real reason you're bringing this bill to the floor today and address that particular bill.
Thank you. Dismiss you all, and the next batch of anyone who would like to come and speak on this bill, please come up and have a seat. Mr. Svensson.
Hi, Kurt Svensson, Arnold, Maryland. I want to start my testimony by thanking Ann Pearson for her letter to the editor on this bill in yesterday's Capital Gazette. Yes, there are some of us that still read those letters to the editor. I want to thank her for two things. One, I really appreciated her public service announcement that she included in that letter to the editor about encouraging people to park in the garage across the street called the Whitmore Garage and bring your receipt with you, because it will be validated and you'll have free parking. I mean, I think encouraging attendance and participation at council meetings is a good thing, and I really urge the council to advertise that fact, let people know, they can park for free. Come listen to this mind-numbing stuff. You can park for free. But also, her letter prompted me yesterday to actually review the agenda for tonight's meeting. So frankly, I wouldn't have been here tonight if it wasn't for her letter. So, sorry, I didn't mean to hurt you, put you at risk. With respect to this bill, yes, behavior has changed in positive ways as a result of this new law, and of course, behavior will change once again if this disincentive is removed. There are times when the government needs to intervene in the marketplace. Councilmember Volkey's choice model regarding paper bags, I mean, I'm sorry, I believe that will initiate a market-driven spiral to the bottom, no charges for paper bags, and paper bag use will go up. I am a lazy cheapskate. I'll succumb and take one if it's free. I mean, it's just the way it is. I'm opposed to Bill 9224. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Svensson. Ms. Leahy.
Hi, again, Amy Leahy, Severna Park, Maryland. I'm old enough to remember when paper bags were passed over in favor of plastic bags because of the belief at that time was that each paper bag would be killing trees. I'm also old enough to forget my bags when I go into the grocery store, so I walk out with my stuff in the cart. Anyway, now we're banning the plastic bags because of their negative impact on the environment and the trash that gets thrown around on the roadways and the fact that the plastic is not biodegradable, and we seem to have come full circle, but we're still not satisfied with the way things are going. The real problem, as I see it, with charging for paper bags is the cost it adds to households, which may be on tight budgets, maybe because, given the rice and the cost of food over the past few years. And oh, by the way, we keep talking about how we're pushing on the, the grocery stores are having to absorb the cost of this, but somehow the cost of everything has gone up so high that it's ridiculous these days. Hopefully, things will come back down again. So it's like adding insult to injury for families to charge them for bags to carry home their groceries and all purchases, since this doesn't just apply to groceries. But if I go into a bookstore and buy a book, they're going to charge me for bags, so I just walk out with it. I go into the mall and I buy a sweater, and I have to walk around the mall just carrying this sweater because I don't want to pay the money for the bag that they're going to charge me. I thought this was supposed to just be about groceries, but apparently it's not. In the meanwhile, guess who doesn't charge for purchases? Amazon Prime sends purchases at no cost to the consumer, and that makes it more attractive for people to purchase there instead of at your local stores, because they're not being charged for this stuff. And then what about the enforcement of this collection of the 10 cents for the bag? Or if somebody doesn't, isn't being charged, who's going to come in and enforce and just start charging fees for all of these people who don't charge for the bags? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Leahy. Sir?
Yes, first, Dave Morrisberger from Davidsonville. First, congratulations, Chairman Hummer. I think you're doing a great job tonight.
Thank you.
So I am here in favor of this Bill 9224. I testify in favor of the original bill due to the evidence that was provided on the environmental impact of single-use plastic grocery bags and due to my love for the environment and the beauty of the county. I never supported forcing businesses to spend their money on bags, however, the value of reducing the use of single-use plastic bags outweighed my issue with forcing merchants to provide a service that our customers do not want. I understand and accept that the grocery bag behavior has changed through social engineering, and also there are many county residents upset about paying for paper bags. We now have the opportunity to amend the charter by removing the government directive on how businesses spend their money. In addition, this bill removes the government dictate limiting when a business can provide free reusable bags. I mean, reviewing that again today, I just can't believe they limit it only during these days and only so many days a month can you provide something free to your customers. It's a business decision for the merchants to provide a service by giving away free bags. I am shocked to hear the Maryland Retail Association advocate for government directives that limit choices of retailers. Opposing the giving away of free bags is not something individuals should force on others based on their own personal preference. The beauty of this bill is choice. Markets, merchants who want to charge for paper bags still can, and people who think merchants should charge can go to the stores who still charge for bags. Now that we have changed our personal habits, can we please return to using single-use paper grocery bags as garbage bags at home, instead of using single-use Glad Hefty bags for our garbage that we put out to the curb? Use paper bags for our garbage that goes to the curbs, instead of single-use paper.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Yes, Stevie Wilding, Crownsville, Maryland, here because I brought Ann, and she wants me to speak. But I commend the county for the passing of the, or restricting the use of plastic bags. And I just don't want to see us going back. I know it's good for the environment. I was a chemist, and microplastics were a big deal. And I just, I know we can only save the environment locally, and if we all do that locally, it makes a big impact. And I know a lot had been said about the trees and stuff, but if we protect it just locally and we decrease the demand for plastic bags, then things will eventually, I don't know, I don't want to go backwards. That's it. Thanks. Bye.
Julia Johnson, P.O., Box 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. I realize what I'm going to say may seem totally out in left field, but you have the international meeting of 100 and some countries coming together, asking, what are we going to do about the plastic in the world? And they said, you guys who are rich, who are using, who are contaminating the planet, who are responsible for the change in the climate, you know, darn it, you said back in Paris, oh, we're going to give you money so you'll be able to be okay, and you're not coughing up the money. And this time, in addition to some of the other stuff, this time I heard more discussion about, well, what we need to do is reduce the production of certain things, like maybe we can get away without straws, plastic straws, or some other things. But the point is that the globe is sitting back, well, I should say, the rich and powerful countries are saying, by George, I'm not paying your bills. And so here we sit, and here comes another year of more contamination to the planet, the greater, we know, everybody knows that the temperature is going up, and they know that magic number is somewhere around 2.5 degrees. But whatever that number is, it's small, and we're racing there. And so what can we do to help these countries, particularly the Pacific Islanders? They're living on coral reefs, and the coral reefs just either get drowned because of the rising sea level, or die off. So that's the magic button. But you get the idea, but I think we need to look at that bigger context and say, hey, I don't want that job, but darn it, it's ours.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. So if there's no one else who wishes to speak, pardon?
Nobody left.
There's nobody left. Yeah, everybody's left, it's already spoken. The public hearing on Bill Number 9224 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 9224.
Bill Number 9224, An Ordnance Concerning Public Safety, Miscellaneous Provisions, Plastic Bags Prohibited.
Okay. And I believe there is an amendment. Ms. Ledbetter?
Thank you, Madam Chair. There was a typo in the purpose paragraph of the bill. The amendment corrects the typo. I ask for your support. I understand, I can read a room and see where some of my colleagues may feel on this vote on the bill, but I ask for your support on the amendment so that we can have the correct bill out on the public record without the typo for the public to see. Thank you.
All right.
May I please read in the amendment?
Yes, you may read the amendment.
Sorry, thank you.
Yes, you may.
Amendment Number 1, this technical amendment makes a correction to the purpose paragraph.
There we go. So is there any discussion on the amendment?
Administration's longstanding policy to correct type grab lawyers.
Yeah, there you go.
Took the words right out of my mouth.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 1.
Mr. Volkey.
Hi.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 1 has been adopted.
So since this was a technical amendment, we can hold the vote this evening. Mr. Volkey?
Thanks. I know Ms. Rodvian wants to say something, and I think as the lead sponsor, she deserves the last word if she wants it. Do you want to go first or second?
I want the last word.
I figured you might. Fair enough. I figured you might. I just want to remind everybody, myself and Ms. Fiedler were part of the six who voted for this, right? So when there's this discussion about how we're trying to surreptitiously destroy this, like, we voted for the bill. If we wanted to repeal it, we would have just put in a bill that repealed the whole thing, right? So we all voted for this, there was a purpose to it. You've heard the purpose. If you read it, it was about getting rid of plastics. It was not about paper, that was not the piece of it. Paper was an alternative. I thought it was interesting that the Retailers Association talked about the cost to retailers is greater than 10 cents. So what that tells you already is, for everybody who's worried about subsidizing people who are using paper bags, you're already doing it, because the cost is already greater to the retailer, so they're already passing the cost on to you. They're paying like 16 cents a bag, you're already subsidizing 6 cents because they're already charging, they're only charging you 10. So that's already out there. I just think some of these things, it's like, there was a purpose in why we did this. The main purpose was to stop the use of single-use plastics with respect to bags. That was the whole purpose. It was not a ban, right? The title was changed, if you remember, it was Bring Your Own Bag. That was the purpose, that was the incentive. By and large, you can see that behavior modification happened. If everybody's saying that in a year from now, it'll be two years, and so now we can come back with it, then we'll come back next year with the bill again, and we can do it all over. And maybe then people will sufficiently have changed their behavior. But ultimately, we all have to acknowledge that there's a point where the need for the 10 cent fee becomes, I had to look it up to make sure I got the reference right, because it's far back in my brain, but it's almost like the anti-dog-eat-dog legislation when you read Atlas Shrugged, right? This idea that we're going to limit businesses from being able to compete with one another. It's pretty wild. Anyway, that is the whole justification. I did, absolutely. And so that's like an interesting justification, because that was not why we voted for it in the first place, right? The reason that we did it initially, I don't think I set that off, did I? Does that mean? All right. Anyway, so I just think that we all need to acknowledge, there's a point where we're going to outlive the usefulness of this 10 cent fee. Already, you can see it, like, the cost to the retailer is over that, they're already building into their pricing. So the whole incentive idea of trying to help retailers, that's kind of going out the window, because they're either going to have to take the fee up, which is probably not something that people are going to want, because they like to blame us for the fee. I saw signs about that. It's like, the government's requiring us to charge you 10. So there it is. So they're not going to take their cost over 10 cents, because then they're going to have to own that they did it. So interestingly, they'll keep it at 10 cents, and then they'll turn around and they'll just pass the cost on to you, which they're already doing. So let's be honest about what's actually happening. I hear everybody, I hear the arguments, we listen, I promise. Like, I wrote down notes about what people were saying. But ultimately, this 10 cent charge is going to outlive its usefulness, because we are going to get to a place where behavior's been modified enough. If that's in a year, let's do this bill in a year.
Ms. Rodvian.
Is there no one else that wanted to speak? All right. Well, obviously, as the sponsor of the original bill, I oppose this bill. I think what this bill really does is just ensures that no one is inconvenienced. And we are at a point in our planet, in our environment, locally, globally, in terms of plastic use, in terms of cutting down trees, in terms of miles on the road that trucks travel, we are reaching critical territory. 2023 was the hottest year on record for the planet. 2024 is on track to beat it. I'm not old enough to remember life before the Environmental Protection Agency, but I have seen pictures of what life was like, and I have read stories about what life was like before the Environmental Protection Agency, and if it seems like, I'll connect this in just a second. But we had major cities with huge amounts of smog. We had rivers that had pollution so badly they caught on fire regularly. And so it took government pushing back against what free markets naturally want to do. And free markets naturally want to shift the cost of the environment, the cost to the environment, to the environment. Nobody pays for that cost. And we are at a point where we have to start taking responsibility and not simply just saying, this is too hard, this is too inconvenient. I will tell you, I had the privilege, you may have read about it in the paper a couple times, but I had the privilege of going to Sweden this summer and looking at sustainability. And... And a lot of their sustainability comes from the fact that their government gets involved. They are light years ahead of where we are in the United States in terms of tackling climate change, tackling pollution, tackling plastic. And we should be looking to, you know, to countries like Sweden as a role model, because we're big, you know, we're over 300 million people, and we're making an outsized impact on our planet in all of the ways. And this is a tiny little bill in one little county and one little state that tackles plastic. And it can't even tackle all the plastic. I would love it if we could do that at the local level. We cannot, we cannot make grocers, you know, eliminate all of the plastic that they put in the grocery stores. But for us to say, it's too inconvenient, we can't handle the 10 cents of doing the right thing, we're, I mean, we might as well just surrender now and say, well, '24 is going to be the hottest year, '25, '26, '27, and, you know, I, as I already mentioned tonight, I'm a school teacher, and so I see little people all day long that are going to be alive when the year 2100 hits. Some of them will be alive. And I'm terrified for what they're going to see if we don't start taking real action. So with all of that, to Mr. Volkey's point, I think you're right. There actually may be a point where we could, you know, say we don't need this anymore, but we are not there. We are not even close. I think that point is maybe in a decade, maybe in two decades. You know, it really takes a while for not only habits to change, which they haven't fully. I mean, we still have, you know, we've made great progress, where over 20% of the population has shifted away from using any sort of single-use bag, using a paper bag. You know, we're, we're in the high 70s in Anarondle County for people that are either using reusable or using no bag. But we're, you know, that still leaves 20% that's still, you know, kind of relying on the 10 cent paper bag, which, as one of, I can't remember who pointed out, but somebody pointed out very reasonably that they are not good for the environment either. They have their own problems. They might be slightly better, they're recyclable, they can be composted, but anyway, I think all of that is to say, we've got to take responsibility for what we do to our planet, and this is just a tiny, tiny, tiny piece. And if we can't take responsibility for the tiny pieces, how are we ever going to do the big stuff? So I urge my colleagues to vote against this bill.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 9224.
Bill Number 9224, Inordnance Concerning Public Safety, Miscellaneous Provisions, Plastic Bags Prohibited.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 9224.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Nay.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Nay.
Ms. Pickard.
Nay.
And Ms. Hummer.
Nay.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative, Bill 9224 has failed.
All right. So, no. Is there any other business any council member would like to bring before the county council at this time?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Ms. Fiedler.
Madam Secretary, for the record, could you please record my vote on Resolution 5024 as an aye?
Look at there. I was feeling, I was feeling. Noted. Thank you, Ms. Fiedler. So, all right. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. County Council is adjourned until Tuesday, December 10, 2024, when we will meet virtually at 9:00 a.m. for our December work session. Details will be on the website in the next day or two.
You got to get your gavel.
Boom.